It is now seven o'clock and I welcome you all here to Village of Webster Board Meeting. I would ask you all please to stand.
Our allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation, my government, and my citizens with liberty and justice for all.
And welcome to the Village of Webster Board Meeting, August 22nd, 2019. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a public information presentation. The board will ask Peter Baker, who has spearheaded the joint study for the sewer, the consolidation and the renovation of the town sewer and the consolidation actually of the town and the village, to present information regarding the Town of Webster Sewer Treatment Plant. Peter, if you would like to take the microphone?
Is my good point this?
Your good point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having me here. My name is Pete Baker. I've been in front of this board a couple of times before discussing this period project. I'm Wood Barton Wood Judas. We are currently the engineer that is in charge of the design and construction of the upgrades of the Town's Waste Smart Treatment Plant. During this process, we started out with an initial engineering report. We created that report, submitted it to the D E C and the F C to apply for funding. We retained funding and then with that, we then completed a final design and we're actually in construction phase, a whole couple of phase one component of the project. During that process, the village operates its own treatment plant. They in parallel had implemented their own study on that end as well. Somewhere along the line between the village and the town discussed, you know, the possibility of, you know, bringing the two plants together, essentially forming a regionalized, a town only, true town only treatment plant as opposed to the combined treatment plant. The two treatment plants are currently in operation, the village and the town. Currently, the operation within the village and the town are pretty unique with respect to New York State. So document on the right is the stamped report that we put together. We initiated the report back in September 2016. Pretty much, we've been in front of the board before discussing the, discussing the project. Again, it's our original approach was we only looked at the town's treatment plant. In parallel, the village had commissioned their own study on the village plant. Neither study by the village engineer ourselves looked at a consolidated alternative. Let me step back. The village alternative, the village did look at a consolidated alternative using some of the existing infrastructure on the town's treatment plant. It gets a little complicated, but I can clarify later on. Really, our focus is, you know, we called this an amendment. We had a plan that was approved and placed. We went back and amended it to include this, what we call the regional alternative. And so ultimately, the final report included two, two kind of parallel paths. One is a town only alternative, one is a regional alternative. The report doesn't make any recommendations at the end as far as the town and the village should go this way, the town and the village should go that way. We pretty much came up with two parallel paths. Should the village choose, or should the town choose to carry forward? Here's the pathway, here's what their updated cost would be, here's what the, you know, the final product would look like. Should there be a regional alternative? Here's what, here's what that would entail as well. We didn't really get into, you know, we didn't look at the village's report and then, you know, make any suggestions. Well, you know, essentially, I like to think it's a neutral report. It's up to the town and the village boards to ultimately, and the town as well, to ultimately decide that approach. You know, part of one of the successes the town had is under the P R approach, we had applied for a water improvement, Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant in 2017. We were denied, we reapplied, this 2016 we applied, were denied, reapplied in 2017. The town actually got a $3 million grant. The initial project for the town was $12 million and it's working out to $3 million grants, the net cost will be, will be $9 million. Reason I'm saying that is with these projects, there's currently, the market is that there's a lot of funding available through D E C, through New York State Water and Mineral Facilities Corporation. As I get into some of the costs and the approach that we're talking about, in general, we use a fairly conservative approach. We didn't, we did not assume any additional grants above and beyond, other than the grant that the town currently has. Quick overview, this is the Town of Webster. We're showing the town's treatment plant located off of Phillips Road and the village's treatment plant off of 250. Again, this is a pretty unique setup within New York State. Two treatment plants, you know, one town. You know, the rest of Monroe County, there's, there's two other treatment plants in the rest of Monroe County, three, I believe, taking audio files into account. So that's, there are, you know, limited plants within the overall county. What's unique about this is two treatment plants, there's one permit, so the permit's currently held by the town, it's called a speedies permit. The town has certified operators, they have to sign off and report their admission, or the discharges to the D E C on a monthly basis. The village treats, pretty much does a very similar process to how the town treats, where the two outfalls come together, the town is actually responsible for disinfection of the treated affluent before it's discharged in that area. Currently, there's a, there's an I M A inter-ministerial agreement that's in place between the town and the village. I think that was originally enacted in 1978, has been updated periodically, and I know the town and the village are currently talking about just that, that next iteration of that Quick summary of what the I M A is. Historically, we used it kind of a five to two and a half, I want to split five M G D, by same M G D million gallons per day to two and a half. That's actually not written in the agreement, and I think that was pointed out early on this process by some representatives from the village. Some of the cost allocations suggests a two to one approach. Bottom line is that current I M A includes certain unit processes within, within the village and the town, and what the caution would be for the village for upgrades. A lot of it's based on the original configuration, which I can talk about in a bit, of the town treatment plant and some of the redundancies that were built back in the late seventies with respect to the village. Quick overview of the existing village plant. Most of you are proud here, probably familiar with it. The only, the only significant difference between the village and the town operation was with respect to their treatment process, the village operates a trickling filter, the town operates a combined more of a conventional activated sludge process. Beyond that, primary clarification, there's headwork bar screen, there's a grit removal process, secondary clarifiers, and again, the village discharges, discharge in the village goes to a dedicated 24 inch sanitary sewer, that's a large backlot to the town. That comes into the plant, the town's plant on the, along the west side of Phillips Road. There's two pipes that kind of enter in parallel, and the two flows, the flow from this, the village and the flow from the town are commingled at the outfall, and that's where the town contains most of the disinfection. This is the town, town's layout, town is a bigger plant, town's permitted, typically designed basis for town's about five M G D, the original design basis for the building is about two and a half M G D. What I have highlighted in blue are parts, are components of the original concept, which included redundant infrastructure for the village. That is a second, the large circle on the left is a second trickling filter, the large rectangle on top of that is a secondary clarifier. Original design basis really was an event that the village had, they kind of shut down, any kind of, they needed any kind of work there, that those facilities would provide some redundant treatment capacity. The reality is neither one of those is operated in several years, they cost significant amount of money to bring them online. Upgrading those components was included, the village actually looked at the upgrades of those components to see if there would be a cost effective measure in their P R. And again, you know, that proved to be a pretty cost prohibitive, that, that approach. Breakdown of, you know, what's, what's the town versus what's the village? You know, just kind of quick synopsis of, you know, obviously, everybody here is from Webster, they, you know, it's typically 75, 25, 73%, 27% is what the numbers suggest based on contribution. Primarily residential, certainly the Town of Webster, there are commercial industrial users. The village's commercial users largely, I think, more apartments, things like that, so they're kind of lumped in the industrial user. The town does accept flow from portions of Penfield, mostly north of State Road, and there's some along the west side with the west side town too, where there's some commingling of, from Monroe County discharge structure. Xerox is a big player, obviously. Xerox is significantly, the numbers up here are E D U's, equivalent dwelling units. Essentially, an E D U is a household, is how we quantify that. That's how we look at it from the standpoint of trying to look at cost apportionment, how are you going to distribute cost between, between the two users. The flow, the flow from Xerox, significant, a lot more flow going from Xerox into the village's treatment plant than the town's. In general, the numbers I have highlighted in blue at the bottom, currently, the Xerox flow into the village treatment plant is about 60% of their overall flow. That varies substantially, there's some I I issues in Xerox, certainly it's, it fluctuates as, you know, based on the population, what processes are running, and that, that a much smaller proportion for the, what actually goes into the town's treatment plant. And then we looked at, you know, overall, if you take the town and the village flows and you combine them with Xerox, about 19, 20% of the Xerox represents the combined net flow between the village and the town's plant. Again, I, I will back up, if you have any questions, I'm not sure if this is, I want to present, or if this is a Q and A or anything like that, if there's certainly any questions from the board, let me know, I can, I'll answer them. I captured most of this. A lot of the, what I'm presenting is kind of a combination of slides we presented early on, a couple of years ago, and the slides I think we presented last year in front of the board as part of this project, but they're, the message is still the same, it's just, you know, providing that background. But what this really highlights is the similarities between two plants, already touched on that, you know, the activated sludge process, the primary difference, both flows come together, the oval in the top right corner is the disinfection, that's really where the flows in the village and the town are coming together. I show Xerox in the middle, it's essentially, you know, showing kind of the split of Xerox flows, most, you know, within Xerox, most of the flow currently goes to the village treatment plant, 10 to 15, the center of the town. So why do we look at the regional project over here? Two, there's two treatment plants, there's the town's treatment plant, there's the village's treatment plant. They're both aged, they both need upgrades, both the town and the village identified that, and they, they advanced projects. Now, what's the advantage of a regional project? You know, we typically look at it, and it's, it's pretty common, this is not a, this is not a unique project, we've, B and L has done several evaluations and/or implementations of regional projects. Usually, they're between towns and towns, so this is, again, this is pretty unique, having a town and a village in the same, in the same community, having two treatment plants. But once you've done infrastructure, in general, the thought is there's going to be capital cost savings. The larger you have, you know, the larger system is, usually the lower the unit costs end up being for that. You know, it's annual O M cost savings, there's, you know, you're operating one airation system, you're operating one digester, you know, fewer pumps, there's an energy component, there's inefficiencies gained with, you know, reduced labor, and you don't have two operators that are maintaining the same system. You know, essentially, within D E C, kind of some softer, softer factors that play into this are the just grant funding. Bringing things together, regionalization, that's, that's kind of a buzzword in New York State, that's under government, he's really pushing that, discussions we've had with E F, Facilities Corporation, they, they tend to favor those projects that are bringing infrastructure together. Essentially, it's, it's a government efficiency, is kind of a focus on that one. You know, with that, you know, I mentioned the water, the W I A grant, we call it the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, that's a 25% grant. The town actually got the full 25%, $3 million on a $12 million project. There's an I M G grant, which is the inter-ministerial grant, that's a, the town actually applied for that, they didn't get it, it's, it's a, it's a larger pot of money, well, it's a larger grant available, it's a smaller pot of money. They don't, they don't issue as many of those, that they do W I A grants, W I A grants is a lot of money out there right now. The I M G grant, it's, again, it's a larger contribution. With that, it's, you know, the town applied for it essentially because there is an I M A in place with the village, they do have an I M A with the town of Penfield, they do take Penfield, so they were eligible for it, but there really wasn't any depth benefit. This, this is really speaks to a true I M G grant where you're, you know, you're bringing two operations together, to kind of bring the flows together. New York State Water Quality Improvement Plan, up to $1 million available in grants. A lot of the smaller municipalities receive letters regarding disinfection upgrades, certainly there's, there's other things that they fund that, that grants out there. And these grants, the only grant we've looked at, and the cost I'm going to talk about later on, is solely the, the existing grant that the town has on the table, so we haven't incorporated any additional grant funding in there. Bottom line is, the town applied for, received a 25% grant, that money, that money is available. Again, you know, other factors, reduced risk liability, you know, speed is compliance. It's, it's one permit, it's two treatment plants, not that both plants are run well. What we find is there's, there's coming up to be a shortage of operators, there's, you know, it's double the risk, two, you know, potentially two things going, that could potentially go wrong, so it's always good to kind of maintain consolidated debt in the future. And then, you know, the I M A ultimately is, you know, kind of defines that project cost structure. Right now, there's, there's an I M A that has some cost sharing for the village that would be, to go to town as well. Under a regional approach, though, the understanding probably would be that if the village plant was supposed to be decommissioned, a lot of those, a lot of components in that I M A really wouldn't be relevant anymore. P R amendment, this is what the P R showed, it's, the bullets there, pretty much what goes into a P R. Ultimately, it's, it's an engineering evaluation, since it's a big feasibility study that's completed, we had an original approach. We also, in our P R, we included some additional factors that we were originally tasked to do, looking at solids, solids handling, the digestion process, somewhat of what the village has, and disinfection as well. Again, we looked at estimated costs, the originally, in town, the P R, we looked at treatment only. Town and village operate sewer systems, there's costs associated with it, there's the cost of users, the users are essentially paying the D P each, there's kind of D P Ws to maintain the sewer system as well. That was originally part of the P R, that's one of the kind of additional stuffs, after we completed the draft P R, we submitted to the town and the village, we got a lot of great feedback from the village. One of the things we would ask, we would just go back and look at some of the overall, trying to, trying to get a better handle on what the overall cost is, which would include for the town, village taxpayer, treatment costs, which is plant upgrades, operation plant, and then the cost to maintain the collection systems. So we talked about, I'll use the term modular, the town, you know, focusing on the town, the upgrades recommended by the town, kind of working my way from the discharge upstream, disinfection upgrades, that P R kind of has some, some recommendations regarding how to kind of enhance disinfection based on some of the peak hourly flows that are currently served at the town during wet weather events. The town and the village have very similar trends with respect to wet weather events. Inclusion of new secondary clarifiers, there's 390 foot clarifiers, that's the project that's currently ongoing in the town's treatment plant. Upgraded activated sludge process, a one additional primary clarifier. Primary clarifier is that initial step where you drop a lot of solids up before you, before you bring it on to the biological process, the activated sludge process. Town has a new brick chamber, which is removing a lot of just the sand and the heavier solid, organic solids, and then also upgrades of the digester, the solids handling, essentially the, the process that is used to reduce the volume and the organic content of the slugs that's removed from the treatment process. On the regional alternative, we looked at, you know, very similar, so what we found is that because the processes in the south by the village and town are pretty similar, you know, the recommended upgrade would be one additional clarifier. Currently, town has three 90 foot clarifiers, under the regional alternative, there'd be an additional 90 foot clarifier. So a lot of the stuff could be kind of plug and play, the town, essentially, town could do most of the work, advance that work, and then should the village choose to tie in later on, there's certain individual components that could be constructed, connected later on. Just a couple, I need to clarify that a little bit, there are a couple, a couple camps there as well. Talking about primary clarifiers, there'd be an additional primary clarifier on that stage. And with respect to solids handling, essentially, the upgrades are pretty similar, the differences was a large, there's a new digester that we recommended for the town only, the size of that digester would increase if the, under the regional approach. Everything else with respect to town, upgrading individual digestion tanks, covers, pumps, all that stuff, that, that pretty much would just add as well. So there's three components here that would be added on for the most part. That's on the, that's on the town's treatment plant. With respect to the village, the village still has the treatment plant that's, that's has the infrastructure in place. Our recommendation was to include a, to repurpose or reuse, or continue to use, rather, the solids handling process at the village plant. That's the initial bar screen, which knocks out rides, toilet paper, some of the, you know, other, other facilities that could kind of come in, the brick, brick chamber, which is, there are two processes very similar to what the town operates as well, and then they have a flow meter. The reason we recommend that is that helps move a lot of those initial solids before that flow enters that 24 inch sewer, the backlot sewer. Secondarily, the cost, that was a more cost effective alternative as opposed to the town having to provide those similar upgrades with that plant. It's, it pretty much kept that, that cost in place, we didn't have to provide the same infrastructure, and then where the town has those components, there's, there's a pretty limited footprint, so it would, it would require some creativity to kind of come up and repurpose those components. So that was our recommendation, you know, we looked at it as we thought it was the most cost effective approach on that end. You know, there's certainly discussions with the village since that, since those recommendations. I know there's been some discussions regarding, you know, ownership of that, of that system, who would operate it in the future, and even with respect to that, just, you know, the nature of the, of the flow that would be going through that, going through that pipe after, you know, with that, that solids removal phase, but not absent of the final, you know, the final polishing and dialogue of the treatment. Again, I mentioned this before, I think it's important, we didn't, you know, we, we were trying to stay neutral, we did not recommend a town versus regional approach. If the town chose to go this way, here's, here's what the recommendations are. If the town and village go this way, here's what the recommended approach would be next up. Ultimately, you know, the final decision, town, between the town and the village and whatever that process is. So here's the concept in a nutshell, you know, I'm showing Xerox flows go, you know, Xerox still probably would flow into the village's plant. Again, it's, it's the, the line in blue is now a smaller line, the village can contain and operate the headworks, and everything would end up flowing into the town's treatment plant. So I talked about the P R amendment, the additional work, so we, you know, it's, it's been a while since we completed the initial report and we've gone through some, some draft reviews. I think in one of the workshops we ran, I think it was probably a little more than a year, you know, what came out is that it's, we provided a cost for the town to, what it would cost to treat, for treatment, what it would cost to upgrade the treatment plants, what it would cost to, for the village and the town to come together, upgrade the treatment plants, what those user costs were. What wasn't answered was what, you know, what was the overall user cost going to be? It didn't, it, it didn't include the sewer user cost, we really just focused on, you know, the, the cost of treatment. So again, one thing is, you know, we're, any, any number I provide here, these are, these are engineers' estimates, I'm not, we're not financial advisors, these are not final rates, these are what, you know, our engineering knowledge, expertise, and, you know, our estimates suggest what the rates would be based on our knowledge of, you know, the current town, building structures, and then what the cost would be for capital improvements, you know, estimates on debt service, labor, energy requirements for the future, for the future system. Ultimately, you know, the village's boards, I mentioned, are responsible for, for that. So then extra, the additional costs we did really included the, you know, what's, what's out, what's, what is left beyond treatment. I mentioned the collection costs, also debt, both the town and the village are carrying debt on prior wastewater treatment plant upgrades, we included those numbers in there as well, just so we could provide a, under a regional approach, here's what a village user would, would be paying, or we estimate would be paying, your local town resident would be paying. The other challenge we had is, we had, we've, two different approaches, the town's consultant and, or us, B and L, the town's consultant, the village's consultant, both generate P Rs about the same time. The way we provided the rate structure, there, there are just two different approaches. The town kind of looked, our focus was a, kind of developing a, an all in, one time capital project, essentially, the town would incur debt, that's going to incur, essentially a 30 year bond, and here's what that, that capital at debt service would be. The village's P R, and when I say this, I'm, both, there's, both are, both are cracked, there's no way or on way, that was more of a kind of asset management, so the village, there really isn't, with the town, the one thing we looked at is a 20 year growth period on a lot of increase in flow, a lot of increase in capacity. With the village, the, really, that's more of an asset management, where the, most of the infrastructure, village engineers, if I'm misspeaking, I, hopefully you can correct me, but, so the bills look at an asset management approach, meaning that it's, let's, what, what needed to be done today, what needed to be done 10 years, what needed to be done in 25 years. They're different approaches. The reason, we had to take, we had to take a hard look at that and try to, essentially, I'm using the term annualize, so right now, I had a, I've gotten aside there, the, that's it for the village P R, showing the rate structure over time on our approach, and that, what that included is where there was additional capital improvements, there was a big bump in what that potential rate structure would be. Also, it certainly is, as engineers, we always like to put inflationary factors on things. The reality is, the town hasn't changed, you know, town doesn't often change the rates, they've been able to maintain and operate the system, you know, minimal rate change, same with the village, you know, the village had just a recent rate increase, but in general, rates for both the town and the village are pretty comparable, they're pretty low compared to the surrounding, the surrounding neighbors as well. So with that asset manager approach, not necessarily on the, on the O N M, but on where the capital investments were made, we had to kind of, in order to kind of come up with I call apples to apples comparison, we needed to come up with a way to kind of provide a comparable approach. Right or wrong, I, I don't want to say, but in order to kind of provide a, just an all in, here's the annualized, here's the average number, this is what, this is how our approach was. For example, on the village, it's, it's a pretty, the recommendation was about a $5 million upgraded in year one, then after year ten, there was additional capital, so those rates, those numbers came up over time, so initial rates were, were shown to be lower than the town rates, we needed, we wanted to annualize that, to kind of come up with, to keep this, I guess, easy to kind of make a decision as possible. Otherwise, the town, you know, the rates provided to the town were certain numbers that were increased slightly every year, where we took a lot of the capital costs, it didn't necessarily need to happen upfront, but where we use that to leverage a larger capital project. The other part of that is, you know, doing, in doing that, the larger projects, they just tend to, generally tend to get that fun, more fun with projects. If you have a project, you've got to provide a wholesale plan upgrade to demonstrate that the plant's going to be improved immediately, that type of job catch would be a C and D E C, and maybe those are projects that are. So that being said, I took a sidestep here, talked about that, but I think I just wanted to kind of talk about the process. It's a little hard to follow, but it was certainly, what we saw early on the process is a lot, there's a lot of focus on the early year cost for the village compared to the town's cost, we just wanted to get those numbers kind of in line. Again, right or wrong, how the, you know, if it doesn't go forward, how the village chooses to progress on. We just needed something to kind of, to kind of levelize those numbers and show a consistent way to evaluate. The other thing with the village cost, we did include, you know, permit, we've had some initial discussions, the village had upgrades of the trickling filter, town requested that, you know, they, moving forward with the separate project, they want to see a second trickling filter, the village, the, the engineer provided those costs to us. The reason for that second trickling filter, again, it's the town's permit, so trickling filter- So trickle filter, the notes, it's a piece of mechanical equipment, they are subject to failure, they are subject to maintenance. Certainly, the upgrades, there, there's going to be a time when we need it, it's a large time, a lot of media in it. So, you know, the downtime for that, when that time is down, with, you know, essentially, there, there needs to be some mechanism to kind of provide continued treatment.
How many, how many other towns have two trickle filters?
I, that I, I don't know. I'm not sure how often. We, we, I think, I think maybe the, the village engineer is a little better understanding that. I mean, it's, it's providing what we've seen with, with E F C and D E C, we operate under those power. There's two documents up there, anti-air system. So those are two documents that, when New York State Fire Department says it's upgraded, now make sure you're demonstrating compliance with those documents. So redundancy is something that is usually there in, out of those processes. So, I mean, it's.
You speak to that. Like, there are treatment plants that have single trickle filters, and there are treatment plants that have dual trickle filters.
Around here, they have.
So it varies. There are communities that have both trickle filter systems with redundancy and plants that have without redundancy.
When you say redundancy, do you mean the other one's going to be running in, at the same time?
It could be. I mean, I.
It has to be because I am an operator, so that you understand. It takes how long before the biological mass that grow on the crops?
Sure. So that, I mean, yes, to that point, that's a good point. So I'm certainly.
We're going to keep questions to the end for, for everybody here.
Thank you.
Just so we can.
Okay. So I'm, I'm going to go through three cost tables, and this is where my, the size of slides is going to be a little complicated. Here's the summary, I talked about this annualization, and then I've gone to a lot of pains explaining why I did it, because it, it, there was a lot of questions on, on how we, how we come up with a consistent approach. Here's essentially what I did. So, you know, I, you hear the number five point one million discussed with the village costs, and the reality is, that's, that, per the plan, that's, that's the first, the first year-one cost. In order to kind of, again, develop that annualized cost, we took all the future costs, pretty much put them in present dollar values, included that. You know, that twelve point five million dollars includes the village cost upgrades, and that does include the new trickle filter we just talked about, and it also includes, you know, the, our estimated contribution based on the current I M A, on the, on the recommended upgrades within the town, what the village contribution would be to the town upgrades as well. And again, that's based on the current I M A. So we came up with a different, you know, a, a higher number, obviously, than, than the five point one. Recognizing that five point one was twenty nineteen numbers, in twenty thirty, there would have been another, I think, four point million and three, I think I got the numbers there. So five point one million, you know, per the P E R, they have objective four point two million, future value twenty thirty, and about three million in twenty thirty-five as well. The town-only alternative, this is, obviously, the bottom right corner is a number, so I think the number there, the twenty-nine, six, and twenty-seven, eight, those are basically all looking at how the contribution to the village. But that's, that's essentially the, should the town continue to move forward, that's really where the, the current number lies with respect to the, the final town upgrades. And then the regional upgrades, they come in about thirty-six point seven million. Again, this is, these are numbers, this table's pretty much clipped from, from the P E Rs and the backup information there. And it, you know, provides our, our breakdown for it. So it's thirty-six point seven million dollars, it's, it's a large number, obviously. You know, when you look at it, when you take that number and kind of divide it by thirty years, we divide it by the, you know, the number of users, it's, it's, it comes to essentially, you know, debt service, that's, we think are, we think all, they're all fairly reasonable numbers, and it's kind of the comparison of the, of the rates themselves. There's a couple things here with the village, you know, we've, with the village demolition, we've assumed one million dollars. That's a number that, we didn't do a detailed assessment of demolition cost, that's, that was a budgetary number that was provided by the village P E R. The cost for upgrading the headworks at the village, they were pulled through P E R too. The, the unit processes themselves, I think, were in pretty good shape. There's some, basically, some, some structural upgrades recommended in the P E R for that headworks building. The rest of the, you know, the rest of the village plan, you know, the plan would be to, you know, demolish decommission. You know, there, there's, there's certainly some major infrastructure in there, there's some major equipment, there's some relatively, you know, equipment there as well. So we haven't included salvage value, we haven't included any, you know, made any assertions or assumptions on, you know, what the value of the land is, you know, future value for the land to be developed under this alternative. So those are capital costs from the perspective of what I've just described. That red line shows the, you know, the, the sewer line that would connect the headworks directly to the twenty-four-inch outflowing pipe. Everything that's kind of hashed out would be components that would be demolished under the current plan. That's essentially, the, the hatches represented, million dollars of, you know, estimated cost for demolition of the village plant. What happens in property afterwards, we're not, you know, that's, that's, I think, should this move forward, it's up to the village to, you know, determine how, how they would be able to repurpose that property. I've showed the slide already, these are just the regional upgrades. It's a fourth, fourth ninety-foot clarifier. Actually, I had it sort of the slide already, I apologize for the large circle. And the top is the fourth ninety-foot clarifier. The rectangle in the middle represents what would be the fifth primary clarifier. Circle in the bottom represents the, the additional digester that would be required. The, that's a, the town-only option looks exactly like that. That circle is slightly larger with the village option. I think it's a fifty-foot diameter versus a forty-two-foot diameter type for the town only option. Blue line, I kind of got that diagonal blue line, that's essentially kind of that jumper sewer line that would connect the existing village inflow, and would connect right to the primary inflow structures. We bypassed the town's headworks, as we're showing now. So the reason we're all here, I'm just discussing the costs. So when we looked at this, we, we developed, you know, just our, our cost estimates, capital cost estimates, engineers' estimates, long-term O N M estimates. You know, and the estimates we put together, again, the town's, the town has received a three million dollar V I infrastructure grant. That money, that money's out there. The market is such that it's, you have to work together, but those grants are available. You know, the, the grant opportunities, the forty percent I M G, that's upwards of a ten million dollar grant. One million dollar New York State W Q I P. There's other grant opportunities out there. I think, you know, Xerox is certainly in the back of everybody's mind, you know, is there, is there opportunities for like an upper state development grant? You know, we're, you know, using that to kind of provide a, you know, demonstrate that you can provide a clean and affordable wastewater treatment plant for, you know, for industries to come in. To me, that's, I'm not a grant writer, but that, that's, that's something where I think you can kind of package something up to kind of show that there's, there's some possibilities there. We have assumed market refinancing. I think the town, when we applied, three point two-three percent, the town's actually doing local financing, their own financing. I don't know what the rate is, actually. That's certainly a discussion because of the, where the village is at with, they have a letter from E F C, and E F C does provide what's called hardship financing, zero percent grant. That's, that's a significant one. It's, it's forty percent. So they have a letter that they're eligible for financing. In order to get that, they will need to kind of apply for the grants, essentially, to apply for that grant as a development of that plan, bond resolutions, completion seeker, that kind of gets you in queue for the, the V I grants that are out there. So I currently work with a client that does have hardship financing, it's, it's almost akin to about a forty percent grant. It's significant. So that, my understanding is that, that letter, I think, expires soon, sometime in twenty twenty-one. That, E F C does, they reissue, they reissue that hardship letter every year. So a lot of, I'm not sure how consistent the village has been on that, but we, every year we get that letter, we look at what clients jumped on and what clients have jumped off. So there's always something to be considered in that. And with respect to the project, we just understand what their project is, and it's that going to be eligible for the project in the years to come. Again, we include the town and, town and village debt. Town is current, currently carrying on, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars annually debt, but I think that expires pretty soon, in that twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. The village, I think, has about one point two million dollars in debt. I think that's, that carries forward from the last upgrade project, which I think was nearly two thousand, so that's probably going to be, I think, out there for a few more years. Again, our numbers, we've got the rate, we've got the debt schedules from the village, we've got the debt schedules from the town. So our numbers, we look at that, we pretty much just run the number out explicitly. Again, I'm not a financial advisor, so that's how I just attacked it, I'm going to kind of provide that, that level of cost. We include sewer costs, so the village and the town both have in their, in their schedules, hard to kind of pull out the, you know, what the specific contribution was for sewer, what's the cost to a town resident for just maintaining the collection system. Jake was really helpful in kind of providing me some detailed numbers based on, based on both budgets. Here's what the estimated costs were for the village sewer. Similar process with the town, what they, you know, what's the, you know, town has specific budgets to operate the sewer system, we were able to pull out, you know, what their, what their estimated cost was for the D P W block hang lines, maintain pump stations, cost of pump, pump. Bottom line is, both those numbers are pretty, pretty surprising, they're, they're both pretty equivalent, building and town, the cost to road drives and town residents, they're not that dissimilar for maintaining the collection system. And I think on the assumption, we, we went through a lot of different iterations, and this particular one I'll present, it assumes that the village D P W would maintain ownership of that collection system, and they would have somebody maintaining what would be the bar screen, grid removal chamber. I'm not a plan operator, that, that's a process that we have, we would anticipate, probably daily, we live in a couple hours a day. Certainly, this appears to be a forty-hour O B type operation, given the, we've not intention that though, those unit processes, they're pretty similar. They're not, they're not the most complicated processes, there's certainly a lot of things that go wrong with them, breakdown, but they, they usually do pretty well, and they, they require our daily attention. But not, I would say, full-time attention. With that satellite system, that's, that's a, a final decision that should this project advance via the regional approach, you know, how that, how that, who operates that system, that's really up to the, you know, the final impairment that the town and village would, would have to act on this approach. Here's why we, so here's the breakdown of user costs. There's a lot of information on the slide, and I, I apologize, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to convey it, and I, I've, if I just present the number, then everyone wants to put the number, and so trying to, you know, it niches a full transparency. Here, here's, here's what our basis was to kind of come up with a number. It's a number that's been provided to the, you know, to the town, to the village, it's gone, been subject to some, to pretty intensive review. I think things to point out, I mean, there's three, three color-coded columns for your, for your ease of review. First column's current operations, that's kind of our breakdown of what's the town, what are the, what are the town residents paying, what are the, the village residents paying? I calculated the debt number, and then we kind of have, here's what the actual, here's what the actual numbers are. What was pretty cool about this exercise is that I have one seventy-three, I showed for the town, the town's currently paying about, you know, one seventy-two. The village, I calculated one twenty-seven. Right now, that, that shows one twenty, my understanding is the village, I think, in your budget season is, I think, July, July, June, I think that number's now one fifty. So, you know, the numbers, both systems are budgeted, and those, you know, those numbers make sense. The middle column's in green, that's the, I guess, I call it the current plan, is if the town progresses its own, its, its upgrades, and the village progresses its upgrades, here's what the estimated cost would be. They came out to be the same, and that's not, that's not fleshed numbers, that's just how the numbers came together, as far as the, you know, there's a lot of different factors with that. Again, you know, things to note on, if I can shoot my cursor here, if you look at the village-only column, there, you know, fourteen point three million dollars, that's the number I talked about before, that's the twelve point five million dollars that I've analyzed, includes the trickle filter, and includes that, the village contribution. If you look at, in the middle, there's a line called Phase One Grant, in the, in the town-only column, three million dollars, that's the only grant I'm, I'm plugging into here. We're not showing any other, you know, grants. The reality is, I think, I think both projects are fundable. I think a regional project probably has more legs with respect to funding, that's, that's my opinion, it's based on our experience, and on what we see with these projects. So that being said, I would call both these numbers conservatively high with respect to debt service. I think there's, I think there's grants, grants available for, for the projects. Columns in blue, the, the ones off to the right, essentially, it's the regional approach. What that is, it assumes that the, pretty much that pot of money, that the capital projects are, the town and the village are coming together, and then from the perspective of a town and village user, they're separated out based on E U contributions. The reason I did that is because there is still debt, and there's still a cost, there's a separate cost to maintain the, the collection system between the village and the town. So those numbers are, are in there. You know, what they suggest is that, you know, the, certainly, the costs go down based on this analysis, under regional approach for both the town and the village. Greater reduction for town, for town, town personnel than are shown to the village. Those numbers also include that, that three point two-three percent contribution. I'm still showing, you know, three point two percent to the village only upgrades, that's, you know, hardship financing is certainly something that, you know, this is our analysis, certainly something that would tend to lower those numbers. I think that's, you know, that based on monetary factors. You know, I, my opinion is, I think the, the numbers suggest that the, the regional alternative is slightly more cost-effective. You know, we, whatever additions, this is one factor, this is, this is obviously the, you know, the estimated economic factor. Put in perspective, I worked in some smaller communities, you know, four hundred to five hundred dollars per, you know, per E U is, is a pretty common number. So I think both town and village are, the numbers are, you know, currently, the, the sewer costs are pretty, pretty low with respect to what's out, you know, what's outside Monroe County. So that, that's pretty much the cost. I just want to walk through real quickly, you know, I talk about funding a lot, that's, P and L, that's kind of what our, our, just our approach is, if we, if we can't, you know, we can't bring the fund to a project, we're not really doing our jobs. Certainly, in this, in this marketplace, there's a lot of, there's a lot of funding available. We've been successful, I know, I know LaBelle's been very successful with kind of grants as well on the state, so that money's out there. So, you know, so we touched upon some of demographics, one, things like when you talk about hardship financing, the M H I, mean household income, is a pretty significant factor. So on, you know, the village, these, these slides are a little, I think these are from last year's I E, I E P data. But, you know, basically, you know, Webster Village is, is grant-eligible, town is also because the town has won a grant. Hardship eligible, the E F C had, you know, they issued the village a letter saying they are hardship eligible. The town of Webster, we applied for hardship, we did not get hardship financing. You know, one thing that makes these projects pretty fundable is the fact that we're, we're discharging, you know, you're on a quick bay water, it's an impaired water body, those are, those are factors that kind of check a box when the, when the E F C is looking at developing a project and, you know, potential grant money. These are some of our, you know, feel-good, kumbaya-type slides, but again, just a summary of the, you know, the V I grants, the, the I M G, the big pot of money. These are last year's numbers, I think the number's even bigger this year, I think it's pushing three hundred million for the, you know, total water grants. I M G, it's, it's a higher grant payout, it's certainly a smaller pot of money. You know, with the I M G, there is no hardship availability. I think just one thing with the regional approach, we've had, reached out to E F C, discussed the process, and we've got one, one that's telling, it has hardship building, one that doesn't. On a regional approach, they were really looking at the hardship, the hardship opportunities probably would, would not be there for the village. And then, that being said, there's a kind of combination, you bring two projects together, does that bring, does that make the project more fundable? You know, so the I M G grant is, is nice for the town, because they're currently doing their, their local financing anyways, so you're looking at, it's just, it's a higher, it's a higher grant payout. Again, the approach I looked at, we're looking at the, essentially, the capital contribution, it's, it's an all-in, the village and town participate, and then the net contribution for, essentially, the bond, the village have to prepare, the bond the town has to prepare, is really just based on user, the size of the user base. So the village being about a one twenty-three percent, I'd say twenty-five percent of the, of the overall capital contribution, that would be the village's contribution to the overall project. A lot of this is managed driven by, they're about to, user base, the village, it's, it's twenty-five percent of the flow, but it's not twenty-five percent of population. Over half that flow is, is type of Xerox. Over half that flows is pipe and Xerox. We presented the slide last year, I'm just, want to show my progress. The cost down 2018 to 2019, we as a PER has been submitted, it's been approved by EFC, so we got that box checked. So I think there's, there's still, you know, there's still a long ways to go if this project isn't advanced and I understand that. You know, we, our approach has been, these are not easy decisions to put forward these today. You know, this is, this is kind of an approach we've used on a similar, more like three municipalities coming together, not, not within the same town. I like to think that, you know, within the same town, there's sometimes those projects forget during the vice of everybody who's in Webster. So again, you know, our, our approach, developed products during, you know, one or two members from each board, DPW representatives, DPW kind of come in and talk about, there's, I'm providing some pretty high end, some high end numbers, some, some big picture things. There's a lot of details that go along with that. Things like who's going to operate, who's going to operate that satellite collection system? What happens to sewer system? How does that, you know, how does that affect, certainly if there's no treatment, you know, how does that affect staffing for both, you know, with the town even giving higher additional operators, the village, you know, what can the village do? Operators are a hot commodity right now, so they're hard to find qualified operators. So, between a town and village, you know, there's some of these advantages that I think are inherent to having a defined system where you can better leverage that limited pool of operators out there right now. You know, again, so that steering committee, the joint, you know, public information meeting, this is, we're kind of not there yet, but we're not, you know, doing the joint meeting for I think that's a few meetings to kind of discuss the project, internally make, make that final recommendation. You know, develop, I don't even, you know, the updated IAs. You know, seeker would be the best, you know, which is a project to find, all of the environmental reviews is going to be a necessary stuff for any project. Certainly could pursue the grant money if it is absolutely required. Window, this year for 2019 is closed, it's both grants are due and catch on the grants is due in a couple weeks. So that's, that's closed, but I mean certainly there's, there's opportunity for, you know, application in 2020. So I just, you know, point out, we've talked about this slide, fortunately we haven't, I'd like to say we were further down the line, but, but we're not. So, that's pretty much it for the presentation. I've got a couple discussion points here, that, you know, thinking through the process and I, I've worked a lot in the town, I just, I, I grew up in Webster, my parents still live here, so I got some skin to gain, I want to think with, you know, whatever decision's made, they're, you know, they're probably, they're here for a few more years, but 10 more years, they're going to sell their house, they're the next person that takes that house over. You know, I think they'd like to know if they have a, a good sound treatment plan in the village or town. So, I've got a couple items here, you know, future Xerox. Again, it's, it's, I, I look at it as, you know, 50%, 50, 60% of the village flow. If, if something happened to Xerox, if that flow was reduced, that's, that's a significant user base. You've got, you've got capital, fixed capital costs that go into a plant upgrade. So there would be, under this approach, there would be debts incurred. Those are costs that, you know, in theory would be lower if there's a lower flow. If Xerox wasn't there, it'd be, it'd be, if Xerox was not there now, it'd be a different, it'd be a different treatment plan configuration. You know, 20% on the regional flow. So if, if there's a regional project, if Xerox did go away, or those flows are drastically reduced, that's, you know, 20% head to a combined flow, inherently I would think would be less of, a less of an impact. And then I understand that there's, there's obviously always opportunities for, you know, new users for the next facility. So, fundability, you know, our experiences, those, those regionalized projects, you know, eliminating additional discharge points, that's something that, that, that does inspire some favor with the funding agencies. And, um, energy efficiency, every time we do a PER, a PER, we have to sign off on an energy efficiency statement that we, you know, we're using green infrastructure, we're using energy efficiency, so the, the, that kilowatt hour generated by two plants is going to be a lot higher than it would be for one. Again, the IGG possibilities, I think that's a grant that's, we haven't seen a lot across the state. We think that there, you know, this is a, this is perfect fit for that. You know, the module approach I talked about, the, the town can pretty much progress most of their project. The village, in theory, could come in years down the road and, and tie in and make that happen. The reality situation is the village is, is faced with a decision. Once, I think, in my opinion, is once you go down that road, it's going to be hard to kind of back off if, once you expend any kind of money investing in upgrading the treatment there. Other grant possibilities, DEC, the WQIP, I mentioned it briefly a couple times, it's something a million dollars worth of grants. Local government efficiency, that strikes me as a perfect grant for this, just to kind of look at, what's the, you know, to kind of help answer the question. So there's, there's grants available on the CFA, Fortuitas, that, that, those grants went in in July. You know, identifying, you know, some, provide some funding to, to complete the study, just to kind of take a hard look at that. So it does provide some, you know, it does provide a town and village with some funds available to kind of assist with, with that evaluation. I mentioned EST before, you know, I think that's, you know, to me, there's some lights with a, a grant that can, you know, advance a project, recognizing some of the unknowns with the largest, you know, the largest facility in town. You know, what can the town do to kind of make, to enhance the, the reuse of that facility? Understanding that there's consistent and cost effective sewer treatment is for, you know, industrial users, I think a pretty, pretty significant sound for, for any, any facility. That's, I've got, I got, I've got the kumbaya up there, it was all coming together, so I think that's, I talked a lot, I apologize. It's an important project and it was a lot of information, it's been a while since I've been on the board, so I, I guess, questions or how, how do you want to? I'll hear from you.
Yeah, I think they don't open up to the, the audience getting questions or?
Board.
Hey, you guys have questions, Drew? Max, go on.
I thought, yeah, I thought Pete had said before that, that we ask questions, we could answer during the presentation.
You sure can, go shoot.
No, he said no.
Shoot, shoot.
Um, what's the urgency of doing this?
It's, I can't answer the question. So I can, so from the town's perspective, because we represent the town, we can, we are currently, the town's, the town's doing this right now, so we were asked, we're in that baseball project, that's probably the initial work the town's doing, because I think we've got about a year and towards the end of next year, that project will be complete. That provides three clarifiers, there's more work than is in the town's plan. The village can commit and install the fourth clarifier. I, I, I can't, I don't know if that's probably more, I'm going to put him on the spot, but the village engineer say how critical it's for the, for the village.
Yeah, so that's, I guess, what I'm, I'm asking. I don't know why they'd immediately have to do this. I know that we, this started way back 2000, what, 16, 17?
Yeah.
But, um, we didn't have an awful lot of input in that first couple of years. I think we, there were a couple of presentations, I know I missed one, but I wasn't here for the next one.
Well, I mean, we've, well, I, I don't know if there's, I, I, I don't know if there's any urgency, I'm not, I was asked to kind of present this one, so.
Yeah.
I think I can, I can try to help answer the question, how I understand it, is there is no urgency, there is no crisis that others make it appear to be. It looks like the town is moving ahead with the projects and, in my opinion, I don't know if you guys agree, that they just want to know if we're on board or if we're not on board and I think that's how I see it. The stuff has been in front of us now for six months or so, so I think that's, I don't think we should call it a crisis or an urgency or any.
Well, that's what I wish, yes. Well, that was what I was trying to understand.
I think it's a crisis, I just think it's a decision. As we talked with, uh, I haven't, we've talked with Peter, I think I heard that at both of their mouths, this is a very difficult decision, probably, I think, I mean, it's one of the hardest decisions you've ever, ever seen, it's a, it's a difficult decision, so.
You did say that.
So no crisis, in my opinion, it's just, we got, you know, it's about, it's a courtesy, it's about a partnership, contrary to what, what may be said out there, that's what we're supposed to do is, is work together and, it's kind of what's.
As long as it's also to both advantages, yes.
Agreed.
And I don't know, I guess I, I worry about the village residents, what it's going to cost them and what are we going to be doing to protect them. My voice is big enough that you can see. Not, not to worry about.
Drew, I would, I would, I would agree with that.
Right. I, I am more worried about that and they are not familiar with anything that we're doing. We haven't, we haven't introduced any part of this to our village residents and I think that's extremely unfair.
Okay.
I mean, I've been saying that for two months, but why can't we just?
Drew, you are, you are on the board.
I know.
You kid.
I have asked for two months.
Okay, well.
So don't, yeah.
There's, there's asking in this presenting, there, we said at this meeting, Thursdays, we can talk about it, anything we want.
I know, and I have, and I have asked to please bring some of the village residents in here, it's their money.
Agreed.
And I would like them to at least understand what we're trying to do. I want it to be for the benefit of everyone, the town, the village, everyone.
That's why we're doing this tonight, that's why we posted.
Well, yeah, I know, but, yeah, but they have one day's notice that this was happening.
That's not true. How long was this posted?
It wasn't.
It, sorry.
Here is the Webster Herald and nothing was in here for the Webster Herald.
Right.
For the people to read.
Two weeks, right, it was two weeks.
There was no information in here. There was one in the beginning of one of the months and that was canceled because we couldn't get our person here to talk about it.
Right.
So it was canceled and the next one.
Kevin, it was in last week's agenda and this week, for this week's Herald.
I was looking for it, I didn't see it in here. I have both of them here. But that's for the Herald, the people need flyers to their doors to understand the cost, what this is going to cost them. They have no clue. I don't get the Herald. I have them to pick this up by the fire department. So, for everybody to understand, something should be posted on paper, door to door, and somehow they learn about what's going on, because this is very expensive. Almost doubling.
What's almost doubling?
How much, well, not.
I don't know what kind of information was, was given out to the town as well.
Right, I've been asking.
Possibly to them as well and I don't know if anything was given out to them.
I came directly to you and asked you something about, in the back parking lot about six weeks ago, what's going on? I was told, I have no idea exactly what's going on.
At that particular point?
Six weeks ago.
I was just coming back to the scene and I did not.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not yelling at you, I'm just saying, for us, if you don't know, I can know and I work here.
All right, so kind of what you're, to support what you're saying, Kevin, is, is if all the data isn't in and there's still discussion about it, what are we going to, are we going to unleash information that isn't accurate?
You said something right there in a nutshell. You're asking for comments and opinions from people have nothing.
Okay, oh, you do have.
Is it possible to have people, the speakers go?
Yeah, that's a great idea, Heather. Do you, if you want to speak, if you come up to the podium.
I got to say voice, I'm sure everybody can hear me, we'll make it easy.
It's more, it's more for the recording than it is the room.
My name's Kevin Fregault, 24 Celtic Drive, I work for the Village Webster Sewer Treatment We take a lot of pride, it's not just about money. We invest in our people of the village. When they have a problem, in five minutes or around that, I'm at their village. I have people personally calling me on my phone to help them. That would be all lost. Your personnel that you have, you're talking about taking them to the town, where you're going to lose. Personnel that already, we also snowplow, leaf pickup, street, all kinds of different items that they need will be gone. A lot of our equipment, you're going to get rid of, that is needed. A lot of people love their job, they will do anything to make this place better. And unfortunately, hindsight's easy, because also when something's gone, you can't replace it. That plant that they're talking about, had been worked on, we've invested money in it, you're starting to reap the benefits of that purpose, what you put into it years ago, and now you want to throw it away and demolish it, which makes no sense. It's like putting a transmission in the car, selling it off about two minutes later. It just doesn't make sense, it's still paying it on Visa, because when you get done, you're still going to, still going to have debt. So, you're still going to be stuck with debt and paying the higher fee. Doesn't make sense. The plant runs at a 98% efficiency, 95, right around there. You can take what we come in and you look at and you go, that is gross. It leaves as a glass of water, it looks perfect. That is my job, I am proud to serve you and try to do what I can. I, um, I don't want this to become like a political thing, but we've done something with other portions of this village, where we've gotten rid of the water. And the water plant sits down there and there's stuff to be done. We turned the key, but we never finished the job. Is this going to be a same, oh, we got a piece of property that's just going to sit there? That wouldn't be fair to the taxpayer either, so, and we'd be responsible. Thank you.
In response to that, I would say that there is a plan as part of this to demolish what's there, except for the, that works.
But, there's a part of that with, and he's an engineer, I'd like to have this be true or false. If you reduce the bars from a half inch to a quarter inch, I'll get up here again, so it makes it easier. Hydraulically, if you take half inch bar, move them forward to quarter inch, will that slow down the water before and after that, so that the screenings can be done? And now you have grip buildup before that, the answer is true, to be honest with you, so that you know, because we take care of it all the time, we always see this. What, what I'm saying is you're talking about machinery, we're going to have to take care of it, but if you reduce it down that much, it has a very good possibility of breaking. What happens is, the arm slams in and tries to grab it and when it keeps building up, it's, it's a very difficult process. Unless you have the redundancies in place, there's cleaning and everything else. It's not just, let's just put this in and be done with it. The plant works fabulous, it is a fabulous, we've been told by the DEC, great working plant. It's working well, keep it up.
I guess to, to quickly respond to that, I mean, we have costs in there, we have cost for, um, use of bar screen, that's essentially required because of the proposal process at the town, I think that's about $400,000 to replace that screen. And we do have labor in there too, so we're not, I, I don't mean to, and the last thing I meant to imply is that either plant was not, I, I thought I said a couple times, both plants run well, you know, to emphasize that. I think the, there's certainly components in there to, you know, to maintain that. And as, and as you know as an operator, there's, there's the daily maintenance and then there's the preventive maintenance and then if something breaks, you know, so there's, there's labor hours included in those, all that must be for that. However, that, whether or not that's, again, here's the estimate for doing that work. We've assumed, you know, village and town operators, you know, pretty similar number across the state.
But do we help them make permit? Because of our clean water, do we help them make permit?
I, I'm not sure how that, I mean, the both plants operate.
They, you know, the same speed is permit, that our numbers are included in their numbers and help them make their permit work.
I, well, hope.
Well, maybe I'll hold off on that one, because not everybody will understand it, that's
Did we have to go up there?
Yeah, I said, yeah, just for, for our live.
Oh, it's right.
Sorry.
My name's Phil Stata, I live at, uh, 21 Fuller Avenue in the Village. My question is really in terms of the existing situation with the, the village facilities. I saw today in the Webster Herald that there was a, a letter to be added by the Webster Citizens Action League suggesting that, um, the half a million dollars that was moved from general fund to the, to the sewer fund, if the, if the sewage treatment facility went away, that that would become an obligation of, of, of the village in terms of taxes. What, what is the answer in terms of the village board to what would happen to that half a million dollars if the?
Hey, Don, sir?
I.
Did you confirm or discuss, or look into what we discussed?
I have not had an opportunity to, to determine whether that could be forgiven or not.
I, I think it would be helpful if this kind of information that goes out in the community were contravened or responded to by the village, so that there be a clear understanding of what the facts are.
I agree. Yeah, we had, part of our problem is when we divided the sewer out, we didn't put a reserve with it. We only put it in the general fund, so when we took the sewer out, we didn't give it any reserves at all, so we had to keep on borrowing from our general fund. And then we lost, um, posting, sludge, that cost us about a hundred thousand. You know, and then we lost the lawsuit, that was another hundred thousand. So yeah, us to try to come back and get our sewer running again and making a profit is going So yet, us to try to come back and get our sewer running again and making a profit is going, it's difficult. But we're trying. I mean, Jake, I know, has been working on several things to try to help us out as far as the sl-. I know they can hear me, honey. Oh, that's okay. He missed me. No, seriously. I know Jake's working on a number of things to try to get back that money that we've lost. And I don't know where that is. Do you? Jake, have you got anything like the sludge?
Yeah, oh, wait a second. The, a lot of that five hundred thousand dollars, if you recall.
Yeah.
We did a study in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen on digester rehab. There was a proposal for a digester rehabilitation project that would have been a bonded scheduled kind of project that was rejected by the board, so then hell, we don't want to do it. We're gonna do another study, which turned out to be the asset management study, that plan, that long-term plan, the PR that Peter referenced this evening. Subsequently, since we didn't do the digester as a planned project, which we kind of targeted that in the study because it was necessary. Now the digester plugged up, and we couldn't transfer out. We had to do it as an emergency. And that was, just happened to coincide with the first year that the sewer went out on its own. And it was kicked out of the NAST with zero nest tag. There was no recognition, which is not consistent with history, that the sewer ever contributed to the fund balance. The sewer underspent revenue, or expense lines and, you know, over-realized revenue lines. Sometimes it under-realized revenue lines, and sometimes it might have overspent revenue or expense lines. But there's no accounting for that. There was never a, all right, let's see how much of what we have in fund balance that sewer contributed. It was just, you're off on your own now.
Yeah.
And so then, yeah, then when the catastrophic event happened, like you can't transfer out of the digester, now you, it's something that can't wait, and that became an emergency, and that's where we had to borrow from the general, borrow from the fund balance, that now became a due to, due from situation. I'm sorry to make you stand there, sir.
Well, no, it's good. It's most exercise I've had. And I'm glad you settled. Larry Macho, two oh four London Road. Jude, I agree with you a hundred and ten percent. Thank you very much for everything you've said. And I do think it is a crisis. And I'll tell you why, me. It's a crisis from a timing standpoint because of what Jake is just talking about. We don't know when the next big dollar value upgrade is gonna be. So if we choose to do nothing for a while, it's kind of like Russian roulette that we could be up against another major, in other words, now we're gonna replace the engine instead of the transmission. So from that standpoint, it's not a crisis, but we should still keep thinking about it.
Respectfully, I'd like to point out that we spent about sixty grand on the asset management plan.
It tells us really pretty good when things are required and what the life cycles of things are.
Okay. Sounds like a preventive maintenance thing, so you-
No, it's a capital improvement, capital investment plan, telling us what the life cycle of certain features and processes down in the sewage treatment plant are, and when they're gonna be suggested or required for replacement.
Yep. In the world of business, we call that preventive maintenance. Good. So you don't see anything big on the horizon then.
Well, that's a five million dollar, that's what we're looking at now.
Yeah, that we learn.
In fact, take care of those that we have down there.
Yep, yep, good. So that makes me feel better. So I don't think it's a big crisis. So I wanted to just ask you a question for, thank you very much for your presentation. Could you do me a favor? And could you show the slide with that real small numbers that you said nobody would ever want to look at?
Well, I didn't find it.
It was good. So you showed the town only, the village only, then regional. And I'd like to zero in on one question just to get your thoughts. Remember the one where the town and the village residents were equal at two hundred forty-four dollars? Right? And then, and then we moved to? That's the one. Yeah. And then we moved to the regional, and somehow, it's nice they go down, but somehow the village residents are picking in a lot more than the town. So the only question I have is, I don't discount anything you've done. You did a great job, live assumptions. What assumption is driving the village resident costs higher when they're only twenty-five percent of the total population?
Couple things.
Okay.
The contribution of reserves on the town councils and the million dollars of the town. They have some reserves in their sewer fund. The town does. So if you look at that, the town contribution on the town roof, you know, we are showing a million dollar contribution, but the town, essentially, they built those reserves up, they would use those reserves to kind of help offset some of the costs.
Okay. Oh, I thought you-
There's also a-
I thought you disregarded that in your study, that you didn't include those kinds of things.
No, that's, reserves are not a grant. That's money the town has in the reserve because they've, I mean, that's-
Okay.
Because I'm here now, which is great to hear, but just how, the fact that you don't just have a chance to build those reserves up yet. It's that. I think there's an additional amount of debt. So the village is carrying a higher amount of debt with a smaller user base, so.
Good. And I thought you were gonna say that. So that's good enough. Thank you very much. So all I would like to say is, based on that reality, I'm gonna go back and just repeat what I said before. I really think if we really want to go towards a consolidation, I think there really needs to, we need to understand the grant funding and how does the village residents get a bigger share of that? Because we should be getting more of the funding either from grants or somehow, call it legalese if you want to. If we're ever gonna consider regionalization, we want to make sure that it's very equitable for just what you said here. Thank you.
I'm not trying to get off this slide, but just liberating this process. I mean, we're still here, so like, you know, our recommendation was, this is, I'm making a public presentation, but I mean, ultimately, it's the town and the village kind of come together and form a joint committee and having those discussions on, you know, where, you know, committees are very effective on these. The joint committees to kind of come up with what the town's needs, what the town wants, what the town's concerns, what the village needs, wants, concerns, and that, so that's, that's, I would, we've been pushing this kind of that next process, so.
Who else wants to ask anything? I kind of want to leave yet. The, can we go back to that slide that you were just on that you wanted to move up a little?
Just come.
I just had questions about, you know, in regards to the green section in the bill there, that shows the town and the village being the same numbers as far as the cost per ECU. That village cost does not represent the zero percent hardship finding.
Correct. I stated that.
Yes, about two hundred thousand dollars a year for that five point seven million dollar project. And it's, yeah, it's kind of front-loaded and with the, I guess, if you go ahead and found a nice new truck and it's fifty-seven thousand dollars, you're not gonna borrow a hundred and forty thousand dollars to get it. And that's the way this looks at it, is that you've got a five point seven million dollar project, but this assumes we're borrowing fourteen, or what is it, engineer now, fourteen, two ninety-two? So we're borrowing way much, or way more than we really need for the project that we're doing. So the comparison, apples to apples, it's like apples to bicycles. Because what really impacts our residents is how it's gonna impact and how it's gonna affect their wallet. And I understand you guys took different approaches, and I should reference this saying, I know I was banging your butt for a long time. We're going back and forth. I think it was a great exercise. It was, I think it was important to do it. There were changes every time we discussed something, so I appreciate you listening to me and the feedback and everything that we're given. But we have a, this is absolutely accurate, counting-wise, when you're looking at something from that standpoint for here what's gonna happen in thirty years, here's what's gonna happen in thirty years. But this frontloads, it doesn't really give us year and year one cost. It frontloads it pretty heavily because we're showing borrowing like two and a half times what we really have to borrow. So that number really there at two forty-four for the village-only project, ideally or realistically, year one, is in quotes, that's really about a hundred ninety-six, a hundred ninety-five, somewhere in that. That without, you know, the additional two hundred thousand dollars a year and, you know, the zero percent hardship what that recognizes and with the, without frontloading the project, without doing, you know, two and a half times what we actually be looking at doing. So I just wanted to point that out because it's, you know, the numbers are, you know, it's tough. You live in this a hundred and fifty different ways, probably. Well, we're close. But that's just one thing I had on that. One thing I didn't quite understand, you mentioned in part of your analysis was a reduced risk. You know, these plants exist because we're protecting the environment, you know, providing service to our residents and protect the environment. Mom always told me, don't put all your eggs in one basket. So I don't see putting everything in one plant, how that reduces the risk to the environment. That actually increases it. If you have two plants, the likelihood of both plants going down and having a problem at the same time is probably far less than one plant having a problem. And if one plant has a problem and a hundred percent of your flow goes through there, that's a problem. You know, so just, just an observation about the reduced risk.
Why, I, I mean, things like the redundant tripling filters, so from the town's perspective.
Correct.
Should they go down and that's ordinance that needs to be replaced, that's conceivably a forty-six month process where it's, from the town's perspective, what, how, what's protecting that flow going to, you know, going to the village at the end, so.
Absolutely. That's what made me think, you know, to break down when you discuss reduced risk because it seemed to be in conflict with your discussion on the tripling filter. So, you know.
I know like on the, just on the towns, on like the three, you know, we've designed, we've got three ninety-foot clarifiers that are designed for, you know, pretty much the inherent design is one of those clarifiers will offline pretty much any time. So that's, that's, there's already, in the town, our design basis, there's redundancy built in to what, you know, how that, with respect to like the clarifiers, how that would, so any process, the way under Penn State's and then the current regulatory requirements are operating under, a unit process goes offline, you've got the capacity to kind of handle that. That's where, so when I say one plant can handle it, yes, it can because of that, because of the-
We're gonna assume that it needs process.
It needs to be incorporated in there. And I think on the, just on the first point regarding, I actually understand that that was, and I spent probably forty-five minutes talking about, how do I annualize, you know, how we annualize its costs. It's a philosophy, but in the same vein, it's, I'll use the example of, and I'm not to keep this too parochial, but my, you know, my parents sell their house, and in ten years, there's a new couple moves in, they've got the rates. And on the current plan, I mean, it did show there would be a pretty substantial increase once that's second, you know, in twenty thirty and then twenty thirty-five. So that's, you know, we looked at it as trying to bring in a larger project. And sometimes it is, it's a tough decision because do you really want to incorporate that now? You bring a larger project, they tend to draw more grant money. So that's, you know, it costs a lot to get these grants. There's a lot of work that is required by the town board, by the engineers, by the funding, by the town council. There's a lot that goes into procuring these grants. So that's really those front-end loaded projects are, you know, generally more fungible, I guess. So they're gonna be more prone to, okay, now the twenty-five percent grant money is gonna be available for that. The asset management, smaller projects, you know, the five million dollars upfront, that's probably a decent fungible project because there's a lot that you have in there. I don't off the top of my head like in twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, what would be planned on that?
Well, I think part of this is a recognition because we made investments in our plant. In the last, you know, ten, fifteen years, we've made considerable investment in the plant. So some of the things aren't required to be done now. They're required ten years from now or fifteen years from now. There's, you know, as part of the life cycles of the assets that we have down there. One thing while we're on this, before you move away from this, you mentioned the economies of scale and the, you know, inherent nature that, you know, things are spread across bigger, higher number of users are gonna be cheaper. All right? If we've got processes or, you know.
Yeah, I guess I'd say like the clarifier, the cost per person, say, per person to build a ninety-foot clarifier, it's cheaper to build a ninety-foot clarifier than it would be a seventy-foot clarifier if I've got, you know, based on how many people can, about the front, it's just how much concrete goes into that. It's just, you know, it comes down to those processes.
This part is treating sewage and operating at Sewer Treatment Plant and Collection System. If you look at the current operations and look at the EDUs or the cost per EU for the current operations, wouldn't that kind of disprove that assertion? We've got about a third of the flow or half of the flow that the town has, and our rates, well, right now, is about twenty-five dollars cheaper. So it kind of reveres, in reverse to the thought that the economy is a scale. And I know it's water under the bridge. When you think back to our water too, when we had a small two thousand customer water company, our rates were way cheaper than they are now that we're part of a company that has a hundred and seventy-four thousand customers. So the economies of scale don't always work because that also works on the liabilities that they have and the amount of work that they had. I think you've-
Yeah, it's good point. There's, you know, there's always, there's no excellence. It's-
Right.
That's it. One thing, you know, with Xerox, we mentioned Xerox and a guess about Xerox, which is a great, you know, obviously you never know, and they're a huge contributor to the village system. But when you're looking at the rates we're gonna use with and without Xerox, for their village residents standpoint, there's not a lot of protection going with the regional system. There's so many fixed costs that we had. There's many components that make up that cost per EU for our village residents. You know, there's the operation and maintenance, which we pay a portion of based on our usage, or, you know, how many EDUs we send to the town. But there's our current debt. We can't get away from paying a hundred percent of that thing, unless someone's open for that. Look, we can't get away from paying a hundred percent of our current debt and the new debt things that we have. Short-lived assets are a portion of it based on our usage. But there's so many things in, that are fixed in the middle there that we pay a hundred percent of, even without Xerox, as we pay a smaller percentage in the operation and maintenance and short-lived assets. But that doesn't impact, that's not a huge portion of what the costs that we're paying is. So I'd invite you to take a look at those numbers and throw them in there without Xerox in there. And it's not a humongous, there's not really a protection or savings for our village residents. There's no buffer provided by going to a regional system that one with things. But logically, I'd look at those and say, holy cow, we're gonna really be protected a lot. There's, it's just, the numbers don't bear that out. So I would encourage you to take a look at it from that perspective. It doesn't, there is no, there's no protection. Without, you know, if we say, all right, Xerox, you know, worst-case scenario, Xerox goes away, and we have zero percent Xerox, there's no protection going in regional system, the way that the numbers are derived and the way our EDU's like.
I have, yeah, we have not, that's a whole lot to be told. We have developed. Intuitively, I didn't open to look at that. I just, yeah, it doesn't, I mean, to me, it's because of that, I just look at debt service. So debt services, say it's a million dollars, it's a million, we'll say a half million dollars, an extra million dollars. That's what the final project is, a half million dollars. If you've got, let's say it's, let's say it's six hundred ninety, six hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, because I can do that math, to the, that's the debt service. Now, if that number gets cut in half, I mean, I guess inherently that debt service is, you know, say it ends up being a hundred dollars per user. If you take half of that, that user base away, that debt service, I think inherently is, still needs to be covered by somebody. So how much of, so what I don't, I can't tell you is what the contribution done is compared to operations and labor. I mean, there's certainly some things that, you know, lower flow, you know, you still have, you still have the organic load in there. And you're probably, your board and you're just as much because there's not a lot of organic loading coming out of Xerox. Certainly your labor here, your labor's there, and you have, I haven't looked at it, but, so, not a conversation.
Yeah, we had Marsha, our treasurer, take another look at some of the numbers too that Clem had. So, you know, and it showed a few different things. So I'm not, Marsha, yes. It's probably, we might get better than I can explain it.
Marsha? Would you like yours?
Um.
Some you agree?
Yeah, yeah, not a whole.
Well, I, as I sent in the email that I, like my cover letter for this, I was looking through the spreadsheets and, you know, your work and Bill's work with Jake, and I found it very confusing, very hard to wrap my head around. So I fixed on the cost per EU as a way to, I don't know, dumb it down for lack of a better word, and really condense it into the end result for the village residents. We looked at, approached those numbers for what it would look like if we did go in with the town versus if we didn't. We also, even though that's, even though that's not on the table, we also looked at what it would, what the numbers would look like if- We also, even though that's, even though that's not on the table, we also looked at what it would, what the numbers would look like if, uh, the village sewer unit dissolved completely. So, and I pulled these numbers from, mainly from the work that you and Lobella did, a lot of it was also from Jake's amendments to that. And one example was the zero interest effect of the, the loans. And that's what I came up with. I'm, I don't feel fully qualified to get into it, because I'm, I'm working off other people's understanding of what's going on. But this was my best attempt at, uh, distilling the information down into the end result for the residents.
I think, because I, again, what I'm, I'm going to talk about grants, and the hard part of these projects is that you come up with a plan, you understand, you understand what grants you're, you're eligible for, chase those grants, you never know if you're going to get them. Current environment, you know, I, we have no way, in a minimal sense, I think the project's only twenty-five percent. Either one, I think, you know, there's a potential, certainly the town, because we already have the history, um, but if you get a grant, it's a high level of grants. I think there's, you know, EFC, all these grant programs out there, I think EFC won't talk about it, but I mean, their group, the opinion is that there's definitely some, um, movement towards, you know, product that will factor in. That's, that's true, that's, that comes from the government, that's kind of a philosophy that's, that we can't do without. You know, that's, that's a soft answer, it's, you own these projects, and you have to build a project, and then you're only going to know what you're going to have until you make those applications.
Right.
And if you accrue a good grant, like there's a, a great financial planner, and so, and some of that's, there's a lot that goes into it, so. I think, ultimately, these are highs, I think, conservative, from standpoint of, I think conservative numbers, and I think certainly there's, there's additional grant line or taking credit for, and I think there's sustainable improvement.
Just like I say, I haven't seen the information that you were discussing, but if you'd like me to take the look, sit down with you, sort of, I haven't understanding.
That would be great.
What's your understanding?
Thanks, Clem.
Was there ever a discussion of going to the town?
Uh, the villagers can have, I mean, Tom can, so that, that was, that was an actual turn of the Lobella, okay.
So the original village study looked at a couple of alternatives to upgrading the facility type of the site. One of those was taking it to the town site, and another was taking it to the county system. At the time, as Pete mentioned, you know, we didn't have enough information about the town's treatment and what the condition of the town's facility was. We understood that the town's engineer was doing their own evaluation, so we focused on what we had here at the village, and then we just made an estimate of what it might take to re-energize, as Pete was kind of mentioning, the existing components that were at the town facility that had been dedicated for the village flow. So not adjusting the town's process, essentially keeping them as two completely separate streams at the town facility. And that analysis basically looked at, you essentially having to completely rebuild the elements at the town's facility to make them work. So that kind of pushed us away from that option, you know, the town site. In regards to going to the county, um, we had conversations with Monroe County DES, we looked at where potentially connection points could be made to the county's, uh, infrastructure, and also what capacity there had, there was in that, um, in order to get flows from villagers' site, essentially, down to the county's treatment plant at Van Laer. The route was challenging, because there isn't an existing route that's large enough to take the village's flow right now. So there would be upgrades needed to the infrastructure to take it, um, from the village down through the diversion structure that Pete mentioned. There is a pump station on the sandbar that's owned and operated by the county, that was installed, I think, in the early two thousands, and at the time, they didn't anticipate, you know, the need for growth coming from Webster's. So that pump station would need to be upgraded, and potentially the pipe that goes from the pump station into the main sewer that goes to the Van Laer treatment plant, that goes underneath the bay inlet, that would also essentially either need to be upsized or renewed, pipe to put in. As well as they, the county had some concerns about the existing thirty-six inch link, um, shore sewer as well, so they had a lot of, there was a little bit notice on their end, saying that there was some passing in the county system. As far as the treatment process goes, I think there's enough treatment capacity at Van Laer itself, but the concern was more about the conveyor systems. So we estimated the cost of upgrading those treatment, oh, sorry, those conveyor points, maintenance points up to the existing thirty-six inch sewer, and just that, um, just those components in and of, in and of themselves were more expensive than upgrading the village's facility. So the two alternatives that we looked at at the time, in comparison to the alternative of upgrading and spending five million dollars at the village plant for the immediate use, um, they didn't seem like they would cost that much.
You know, you look at it just from the village perspective, I wonder what it would be from both the town and village?
In terms of the town, also, also for the county, we did not look at what the ability of taking the county.
You're here, did you guys ever look into that, what would it cost for the town to go to the county?
We do take the west side of Webster's out to go into the county through there.
So there's, there is a portion of the, the village Webster and assuming town and the flows that go to the village currently. In order to take the additional flows from the village, there would need to be some infrastructure upgrades.
I mean, good, good comment, my reflection alternative is pretty, that would one long space alternative, take that, take that times, you know, with additional five M G D, during wet weather events, it's, it's even more soft, so your pumping, you know, conceivably twenty, I think, our peak hourly full of nine is over twenty M G D. That's a lot, I mean, that's just, that, that drives the size of pumps, the size of force made at a long distance, so there's a lot of, it's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go there, I don't think so. And I don't know if Van Laer can handle that much, but, you know, village flow is on average one point six, something like that, you know, if you take the town for that, that's, that's a lot more, it's a big planet, but it's a big hit to take on it one, one time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more questions for anyone in the audience? Except you.
Richard Walters, Twenty Elm Street, uh, I had a question, either to camera. We talked about different rates here, and what rates would probably be, but we also did several alternatives. Now, did the old village plant become a separation plant for taking out the car strip and kind of stuff, right? That, where I understand it, uh, now, I don't know, and the village would maintain the collection system. Now, if we're putting cleaner stuff down to the town plant, how would that adjust the rate? I mean, it's been talked about, if we did consolidate, the rates would be the same. And if we maintain our own collection system, is the town built separately for the collection system, or is that included in the sewer right now? Does anybody in the town know that?
It's included in the sewer right now.
It's included in the sewer right now, so if the rates went to being the same, but we maintain our own collection system, and we have to, the village may be separating out the coarser solids that are not truly waste, that things get flushed out, that shouldn't go down the sewer probably. How would that adjust the rate if we're both paying the same rate? It doesn't sound quite like all the numbers have been worked out yet. And just one other thing that I want to set out, and I want you guys to answer this, is I just want to say what Jerry said earlier, the decision of this board is not what is best for one Webster, it is the best for one village. This board is responsible to the village and not to the town. So if our decision does in some way make the town costs go up, but save the village residents more money, this is the way I hope this village board decides to go, because that is your true responsibility to the village taxpayers. Thank you.
Well, I think we've, to his point on, on the collection, the satellite, called the satellite collection system, um, we have, we have two different alternatives, I only presented one, but there's a village-only alternative, which I think the cost I presented there was assume cost or go down there to maintain a collective system. Alternatively, the town would take that, I mean, the reality is, it's, it's someone that has a village head or someone has a town head on, they'll be doing the work. How that, you know, that's, I guess, from the overall grand, how much goes into it there, there's a cost there, it's not a significant cost, um, to what we presented, assuming the village would, would maintain that. The next step would be to determine if this project moves forward, who's responsible for it, where are those, where are those lines responsible, and where the line of demarcation ends. That's, that's beyond our, our scope, we provided some alternatives, these are estimates, these don't reflect, you know, they need, that ultimately, these need to be vetted by both boards, financial advisors need to come into play to kind of look at, you know, what the final rates are, so they're, they're engineers' estimates, it's the best information we have.
Well, my opinion would be that if we do keep the village, keeps the system, the town keeps their system and ties it to the plant, that the town should build separately for their collection system and for the plant, so that everybody is treated equally, thereby not forming a, a, a way where somebody in the future could fudge numbers by charging actual work done in the town to the, to the plant, where it was actually being done on part of the system. I'm not saying anything about any current people in the town, I'm just saying that in my experience in business, numbers get intercharged between departments that shouldn't be. And somebody at some time down the line could hurt either the town or the village by mixing numbers unless the town separated their system, collection system from the plant itself too.
Well, it, it, it would remain completely independent collection systems, because the, the point of tie-in still occurs in the town's plan, so there's a, you know, under this approach, there would be, need to be a revised IMA between town and village. And those roles, and that's exactly what the IMA would do, those roles and responsibilities would be, that, that needs to be flushed out in the IMA. How there's, who's paying who to maintain that, and who's bearing the cost, so that's, those are the details and, and that, that would need to be worked out with us. I don't think the intent here was to make a decision tonight, but those details would need to be worked out at the time. Again, I keep chasing back this line, I'm not, but that shows that, that process, and we're, we're step one. You know, we've got a lot of things, you know, if it's decided to move forward, and even that decision based on our flow path isn't decided tonight, it's decided, you know, there's, you know, our recommendation, our experience is bring, you know, bring, form a committee, have those discussions, and then determine if this project actually has lots. So, I mean, to the point earlier.
That's one of the decisions that would have to be made before a final commitment.
Yeah, so I, again, I don't want to overspeak, but I don't think the intent was to make a decision tonight, just to kind of present the fact, so.
Thank you.
Just one thing, I have, I have my soapbox, I have not made this presentation to, to the town board, so I know that's, I just want to make sure from the village's perspective, we were, I was asked to come in and present, um, we have made a separate, you know, we have not made a separate presentation to the, to the board, to the town, so. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that we're, we're trying to be as transparent with this process as possible, we're retained by the village jam and the town to complete this work.
Thank you.
Peter Eldredge, Fifty-Nine Gundy Avenue, sorry about my tardiness tonight. The, I had a few questions, and I tried to catch the excellent video on Facebook, thank you, Adam, so I did look at a little bit of that. So I hope I'm not being repetitive when I ask this question, um, but I wanted to, my major focus, when I looked at the various studies and, and all the emails that came through foils and things like that, were, was about the debt. So the village, uh, right now is owed about a half a million dollars by the sewer department. So, um, if this was covered, let me know, so I don't want to be, like, so I don't want to be repetitive, but if the sewer department no longer exists, does this debt then roll back to the general fund? It also appears that there is about sixty-five, sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars a year in bond payments that occur, and that may be a low number, I just, that's what I'm looking at, the financials from last year, I looked at the last two years of financials, which actually break out, um, the sewer department. Those sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars are owed to banks. So I understand the half a million dollars could theoretically be forgiven by the village board, but that's an awful lot of money to forgive, um, and I wonder if you would forgive it if you could, if you were going to do that, but it'd be helpful to forgive it now, while we actually have our own plant, but that's another issue altogether. But for the sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars, that one, you can't forgive. So if there was no sewer department, does that simply roll back to the general fund? And how much general fund tax does that represent? What I'm trying to get at is there's an interconnectivity here that needs to be dealt with, I think, and I think it may be premature to make decisions until that interconnectivity is figured out. I, I would offer another one, just for your thinking, which is that some of our fine employees at the sewer treatment plant, they actually work on snow plowing, right? And if they're not there, what happens to the snow plowing staff in the winter? Does that, do we have to hire more people? Do we have to actually give more overtime to our existing personnel? We store equipment up at the sewer treatment plant, if it's not there anymore, where do we store it? If there are road repairs to be made, where do we store what's left over from that? Where do we store other items that we put up there on the pad? Have we looked at all those possibilities in terms of looking at the overall effect? Not so much on the sewer fund, right, but on the general fund, which is where we really have to concentrate if we're going to look at the survival and endurance of the village, right? Because Jerry, I know we talked, you're kind of right, people may not care about who, who's sewer that goes down when they flush their toilet, but they might want to make sure that when they do that, they're not paying more taxes. And that's where I'd like to see maybe some study be done on this, because it's really critical, because that's how villages dissolve, right? They dissolve because suddenly the rates are too high, you know? What happens is they look and they say, well, the, the rate's too high, because they could just get a better deal by just not having a village. And I love the village, I've always loved the village, clearly I love the village, I'd like to see it stay. And if, in fact, the rates go up because of this decision, it's a bad decision, in my opinion. The sewer department's a business, and one way of looking at it is to make the business profitable, right, to actually make it work. It did work for sixty, seventy years, right, it could still work. I'm not sure if you're all aware, but, you know, I'm taking too much time, but the thing is that when the sewer department was originally formed, right, we had a village board that was visionary. They went out and they grabbed hold of depression-era funds, cutting-edge stuff at the time, to put together this plant, right? And you are like them, you can be just like them and be just as visionary and hopeful about the future. So ultimately, my two things I'd like to leave you with is, please be hopeful and visionary, just like the people before you, just like the people I know you are. And the second thing is, please investigate the effect on the taxpayers of the village through their general fund. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to?
Can you hear me? My name is Lori Reynolds, I live at one thirty-eight Hudson Street. My husband and I have lived in the village for over forty-five years. We love the village. I have a couple of concerns. First of all, I agree with Judy, and I agree with Kevin Ford, that more information needs to be out to the residents. This is a big, major decision. This isn't a little thing, you know, this is major, and the people need to know about it. Another question I have, the DEC has already fined the town. What's going to happen if it's consolidated? Is that going to happen down the road, too? There goes more of our taxes. So I'm just hoping that you make the right decision here. And I hope you'll consider taking it out to the public, taking it out to the residents of Webster Village and allowing them to make that vote instead of just the fact that you... Thank you.
Can we hear from our person that we paid for?
He's welcome to speak, sir. We paid for him, just so you know.
I think he needs to be asked to come up and talk.
Doesn't he get asked? He's welcome to come and talk. It's a public...
I'd like him to come up here and tell us what he found for the best value, which is the best route to go from his response.
For the best value. So first of all, I would thank Peter for presenting. And I want everyone to understand that this report, this evaluation was a joint report between the town and the village. So what he presented, the way the process worked was that the evaluation, the technical evaluation of the capability of treating the joint flow from the town and village was something that, because the majority of the upgrades would occur at the town site, the town's engineer took the lead on presenting the, or evaluating the needs and the improvements that would be necessary. They then provided the information to us as the engineer, the town as the engineer for the village and asked for our input. We provided our input. We provided our comments, review comments. They addressed the comments. And I'm not sure what the status of, but it's still a draft report at this point. Oh, is it final? I haven't seen a copy of the final report prior. The final report speaks for both the town's engineer and the villagers' engineer. So whatever is in the report is a product of both Barton and Judas and Lobello. Now, as Pete mentioned, there were two different approaches that we took and for different reasons. And I think that's one of the things that I would say that's important to note is that there's different purposes for the report that Barton, Lojus and the town put together and the report that we initially put together. He articulated that. When Lobello was hired to look at the villagers' facility, it was to look at what would make the most sense given what is currently at the village site. What did we feel needed to be upgraded, improved, replaced? And what, and what timing of that was necessary? So we took, as Pete mentioned, the asset management approach, which is basically looking at the life cycle of each component within the village plan and seeing, in our estimation, how much life was left. So that's why we came up with these three phases. We, we had a time horizon to evaluate that. The time horizon was twenty-five years, starting back in twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, whenever it was we started the report. And our approach was to look at, within that time period, what did we feel would need to be upgraded or replaced at a what point? So we looked at every piece of equipment. We looked at every process. And we identified the items that we believe needed to be addressed right now. The near-term improvements, and that's the five million dollar project that was presented. We also looked at what would need to be replaced in the future. When we looked at each component, we also looked at the timing of when that would make sense to replace those based upon our experience, based upon the recommendations of the manufacturers of the equipment and where it lined up for those years that there were massive amounts of outlay to make those improvements. We recommended, because there's different ways that you can pay for improvements. You can either pay for it through user rates, through an operating, operations and maintenance expenditure budget, or you can take out debt. So where there were situations, where there were years where there were a lot of improvements that needed to be made, we made a calculated decision to say, maybe at that point, it doesn't make sense to reserve money to pay for that upfront and instead take debt out and spread the cost of that long term. So that's the process that we took. And we identified those projects, the five million that formed the Freeman. And we used estimates, just like all engineers do in terms of what inflation is going to do, what interest rates are going to be. And when you're projecting out twenty-five years, it's very difficult to know exactly what that's going to be. So that's the approach that we took of our report. The approach that Pete had mentioned that they took for evaluating the town and the regional facility is really more taking a look at comparing two different options and making the best possible way to compare those options on an apples-to-apples basis. So when it comes to the question about redundancy, we did not look at redundancy as part of the village treatment plant upgrades because that's not something that the DEC had requested us to take a look at. If you were to build a new treatment plant and you followed the test state standards, which is the design standards that we use, there is a requirement for redundancy to be put in there. So if we were to build, design a new plant, then that would be in there. However, we have, also have experienced that. It's not necessarily something for tripping filters that the DEC has pushed for redundancy to be a critical item. So for example, I had worked on a, I had worked on a treatment plant in a previous job where we did an operating tripping plant facility that also had a single tripping filter, tripping filter. And it was not a requirement of the DEC to add redundancy to that secondary treatment. Now, in order to make a comparison to what the town has at their facility, they have an activated sludge system which consists of multiple secondary treatment units, treatment tanks. I think there's four in total. The Erisian tanks is.
We have three.
There's three of them. So that gives them the ability that if they needed to maintain one of those tanks, they still have the ability to treat within the other two tanks. So they have redundancy that was designed into the initial design of their treatment process. The village doesn't have that because the tripping filter is the only secondary treatment that's available there. So in order for us to compare the redundancy that's available to the town's facility to what might be necessary for the village so that you could compare the two projects side by side, we had to add in the one point eight million dollars of cost for adding a redundant tripping filter. Whether or not the DEC would actually require that is something that we haven't approached them with yet. Again, this is something that we haven't had experience with. It may be that the DEC says that as we apply for moving forward with the project, they may want to see that redundancy built in. I don't know. It's not something that I've experienced, but it's a possibility because, like I said, it is required by the design standards. So when we look at how much a village or, sorry, not village, how much a user in general has to pay, the presentation of the estimates that are here, there's a lot of different things that go into that. And there's a lot of different scenarios. There's a lot of different assumptions. One of the assumptions you've heard today was, you know, in order, again, in order to provide an apples-to-apples comparison, we keep this team, they forewent any possibility of future grants. Now, we, and the N L would believe that grant funding would be available and that would change the numbers that are presented to you. To what extent? We can't present that with any certainty at this point because those grants haven't been applied for and we haven't had the decision on them. So I agree with Pete that what this presents to you is a worst-case scenario for all options because it doesn't include the possibility of grants for the regional facility. It also doesn't include the hardship that has already been, I would say provided, but it's been promised essentially by EFC for the villagers' own upgrades. So it's very difficult for us to stand up here and say, this is what the ultimate cost is going to be because it depends on a lot of factors and then depends on a lot of assumptions. Depending on the question that's asked about what do we believe the cost will be, you know, I can give you that because we've done the analysis for the village, for the villagers' upgrade only. I think a similar asset management evaluation would need to be done on the other alternatives to see where that, how that would shake out. Because I don't think that you can compare the approach that we took with the approach that the town's engineers took. They're for two completely different purposes. Does that answer your question?
So, well, I'm trying to make, I'm trying to let the people see that right at this present time, the plant is running in a very high efficiency, very cost-effective way because of what they've invested already. That's what I'm trying to say.
And I don't think there's any conception to that point.
Okay, that's why I want to be...
I don't think anyone here disagrees with that statement.
Well, not everybody knows. No one has the numbers, but that's what I'm asking.
I mean, the reality is there are probably things that had you followed the manufacturer's recommendations for equipment and processes that are currently at the plant should have been replaced years ago. But due to the diligence and the knowledge and the expertise of the village plant operators, they've extended the life.
Oh, go on.
There are, there are items that occurred at the plant that, at other facilities that haven't received the same care and attention they have there and they've caused problems. And the expenditures had to start earlier in that, to that point. So without a doubt, there are components of the plant that have lived beyond their useful life, their expected useful life. And that's, you know, a lot down to the, you know, the expertise and the diligence to which the plant's been operated. The downside of that is that the longer you wait, the more costly it becomes to replace these items. And I've heard the arguments made before about, well, can we just push this off? Can we just push that off? You might be able to, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's the best thing to do because there are a number of different factors that are at play. The grant funding that's available today, ten years from now, may not be available to you.
I understand.
That's a big point. I mean, we have, as Pete made the point, the village has a hardship commitment from EFC for the village only project. That may not be there in twenty twenty-one. We don't know.
I think you answered what I was looking for. Thanks.
While I'm up here, if I really have a question. I mean, that's, you know, I think, like I said, I think Pete's done a fantastic job of putting a very difficult, complicated process and explaining how that process works and explaining, you know, what the different parameters are. And he says, as he said, he's not putting a recommendation out there on it, even if we just want to be able to present the information to you and hopefully in a way you understand what those different issues are. And at the end of the day, there are other issues that the village board and village residents have to consider that go beyond cost. So even if the numbers don't shake out in one way or another, there are definitely other factors that is fine, ladies and gentlemen, will have to consider as they make the decision because they do have villagers' interests at heart.
Thank you.
So thank you, Adam, as well put in. And basically, I think both of you, this is the best guess in the nation. You guys have talked about it. And there's unknowns. Either way you go, there's a lot of unknowns that won't be figured out until you start moving in that direction. These numbers can all change based on grants we can or cannot get. If the village is on her own, there is still debt owed from the village to the town on their upgrade that still has to happen. We still have five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that we have to figure out. Xerox is still something that everyone should think about, regardless if we're joint or separate. The availability for growth in the town would, in common sense, would reduce EDU costs for everybody, right? More people painting the pot is good and less. So there is a lot of things. It's a, that is a very difficult decision. But unfortunately, this board has to make a decision of one way or the other and then work and partner. I would love a committee put together of residents, building owners, of both boards, to discuss and work through those things to see what benefits everybody. Yes, I represent the village, but I live in the town of Webster. And I do, when I walk door-to-door and campaign with others that were up here, we heard from residents that can you fix the relationship with the town and the village? That was brought up multiple times. So, so yes, we do represent the village, but it is a community. You can argue that all you want, but it is a community. So I want to think of everybody all together and can we, can we benefit from being together? You know, I don't know. There's still a lot of unanswered questions, but you're not going to know all of it. You just can't until these guys present very well and they're telling you that those can change, but you don't know that right now. So.
All right. I'd like to move now to public comment. If there's anybody who would like to address the board on, I suppose, any other issue than that which we've been talking about now for the last two hours. Invite you up to the podium.
I'm playing on my historic preservation app that I addressed you tonight. So I, I had, we had a historic preservation committee meeting on Tuesday night and I wanted to make sure that I addressed you tonight. You're probably aware of the fact that the historic memorial park needs to be replanted in some manner or means. And I had submitted to the board a certificate of appropriateness to that effect. And I had included Judy and Heather in on this email thinking perhaps we might be able to discuss this tonight a little bit. So if I could just ask you, to give you a sense of the timeline of it. So in order for the garden to be, for the whole memorial to be replanted, we'd have to do it by the end of October. So that gives us roughly one or two at most village board meetings to deal with this. So I ask you to consider either tonight, although I'm not really sure if we prepared, or the next meeting at the latest. If you could examine that certificate appropriateness and then give us your blessing to it through either some kind of motion, probably, that would say that you are forwarding it to the historic preservation commission for their consideration. And the only reason I'm asking you this is because of that time. We are at a timeline for the planting because unfortunately, water comes, but it does. So we would, so we do need to get that. And it's, and also, I just want to make sure you understand that it's not just the planting, that according to the best bids we have, we're going to have to dig up a substantial amount of soil because the soil's poor there. One of the reasons the trees look kind of terrible, they look pretty good, but they looked as good as they could, is because the soil was suffering because it's constantly getting salt every year. So one of the recommendations was to dig the soil out and put new soil in, which is going to take time and it's going to take Jake and his guys to help. So, so we need to have some resources there. So all, which is all in a long way, if you could, if you could either deal with this meeting or next meeting so we could hold our public hearing... so we could hold our public hearing, because we're required to do that. We would be willing to hold our public hearing at our next historic preservation commission meeting, which is towards the end of next month. And then we'd be able to get public comment and then provide you with a final, a final on what we're going to do for that site. So that's it.
Well, I don't even know if that's going to give us enough time to get all the plantings yet.
Well, we'll give it a shot.
Well.
That's why I'd like to.
I don't, is, is, is this difficult? I mean, I think you guys looked at it. We've talked about it before.
Yeah, if you, if you don't even probably, well, Don, do you know what the motion could be from the board for this to refer this to them? Would that be a good, would it just be to refer it to historic preservation commission?
Certificate of appropriateness that's got to be yea or nay.
I'm just, I wasn't sure about the language because we really haven't done this before.
Well, it doesn't really need to be a motion. It's, the way the, the way the code says, it's just the property owner applies to the historic preservation.
Right.
So it could be Jake or Will submits something to the historic preservation board on behalf of the village.
But does the village, does the village board say that we're doing it on behalf of them?
I don't think it requires a resolution from the board. To me, that's micromanaging, I think. I'm assuming, I'm assuming this, of course, that's the assumption that at least three people of this board are in favor of doing something to that part.
Yeah.
So they, so if I, if I can get three of us to say, yes, would that be sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. Are there three of you that agree with that certificate of appropriateness? Al, what do you think?
I agree.
Gary?
I think that Mayor had something to say.
Oh, okay.
He doesn't want any apple trees.
Well, actually, as it's written on there, it's not. You're submitting, you're submitting an application that specifically says they're non-flowering trees. I didn't, okay. Here's the thing. I don't want to get between the flowering and unflowering in the expansions, okay? I know it's a big deal. People want to see some on one side, one on the other. But if you submit the application that way, we're going to consider the application like that. If we make any adjustments, we're not going to surprise you. But I would, I would really encourage town residents, especially those that go past the island on Lapping Park to, to actually, you know, come to our public hearing. Let us know what you think. Because it is a landmark and it does set off the name. So are you okay?
So you, you're taking our roll call now, Heather?
I don't know. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do.
No, I don't think. I'm confused.
I would say too. Maybe you can help me out. I'm confused.
He said he doesn't, he said he don't need a vote.
It's because one could argue that the village itself doesn't even, can even bypass the historic preservation commission and just make the improvements to its own property. Because it's like, the historic preservation commission doesn't exist but for the village. So it's like the village is making an application to the village.
Right. I realize that.
So it could be as formal as you want, I suppose, but, or as informal as you want.
I'm not trying to be formal, but I'm just trying to get a sense of how I want to do it.
You just want to make sure you do it legally.
Well, then, well, that's my point, Jude, is legally, you can be as informal or as formal as you want.
So, okay, how about this one? Are any of the four of you against this?
Pardon?
Are any of the four of you against that application?
Application?
Yeah.
Now, to bring it, to bring this up or?
Yeah.
There you go.
We will stand in our public hearing with Don's blessing at our next historic preservation.
Thank you very much.
Real quick. Is this a historic landmark test?
It is.
Yes.
It is.
It was definitely, it's so, I don't know, like, 2005?
Yeah. In fact, it was in the newspaper today because remember we had.
Oh, Lindig, Lindig, I would think that.
Yes.
And I'm trying to follow what's actually in the code to set the precedent for you to do it right.
Exactly.
That's all. All right. Well, you pretty much answered my question. I don't want to take more of your time because it's getting late anyways. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. You were 32 seconds over your time.
I know you said you wanted to change the subject. I just want to go back to the sewer treatment program. Just to say that there's other ways of being a community with the town and the village. You don't have to make it from all in head teams.
All absolute.
I don't want you to feel you have to do it now. We have found a going to the town, we're village residents. We've been told by the supervisor, prepare to the village. So there's a problem there too.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Then I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and we'll move now to board business. First, I would like to ask for a resolution to approve the minutes from August 8, 2019. You have them in front of you. You have a chance to look them over.
Yes.
You have. Make that, maintain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Jude. I'll second it.
Trustee Nancy?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next is a resolution to approve claims and warrants. I had an opportunity to let those over. I did that today. And I did not find anything that I would like to have clarified or bring up.
Yeah, so you're here today, signed up.
So I will maintain a motion to approve claims and warrants.
I'll make that.
I'll second. Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Nancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, there is a resolution to approve a change to section 8.3 of the village of Webster policy nano entitled vacation time. This is a change that is an addition, I suppose, to the policy which was put in and then declassified in the previous administration. It is on vacation leave and under the years of service completed and anniversary date. Talks about, in addition, this is the new addition to the policy. In addition to the years of service credit for vacation, the village clerk, DPW superintendent, treasurer may receive an additional week of vacation on their anniversary dates to offset additional work performed that exceeds their standard work week. There also was another addition, and that is under accumulation. With the exception of the village clerk, the village treasurer, and the village DPW superintendent, no employee can carry over into the next year and accrue more than five days vacation time at their anniversary date. Village clerk, treasurer, and DPW superintendent can carry over and accrue no more than 10 days vacation into the next year at their anniversary date. I believe that's because there may be times that the additional vacation cannot be used in the current year. So, any discussions?
Just this one right here.
He doesn't have a problem with the superintendent and the treasurer, just the clerk is an individual clerk.
I thought that would be boring and no additional vacation time.
I think Carl's on Facebook Live if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, he's still here. He, so he said that a little while ago. He's still tuned in.
See, I thought we pretty well agreed.
I think we did. There's one more. I'm getting a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Nancy?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Thank you, Don. Always.
Okay. Well, at this particular point, I have one more item of the village board business. And that is that I would like to undertake a motion for the village and town to engage in a joint sewer project where a committee would be put together to present to both boards that would need to be agreed upon by both parties. Any changes or?
So is this a, we want to investigate further with them, but it would be contingent on agreement of the final numbers final?
Are you talking, Jerry, is this sort of the second part of Peter's timeline of next steps? He called it project steering.
Yes, yes, actually, that's what he just said.
There's no, there's no commitments until you get down to this memorandum of understanding, two more steps later.
There you go.
So, but the steering committee, as Peter pointed out, can address the issues, a lot of issues that Mr. Walter raised. You know, who's going to run the collection systems respectively and the headworks and address issues of, of this more eternally, you know, the taking up the slack of village person, the sewer personnel to make snowplow and things like that, you know.
So I don't know if we would need a motion, but then I would probably change that to a joint sewer steering committee.
That's good. It sounds like that would be.
Yeah, and you could, I hope we have that under way.
Yeah, obviously, the membership has to be agreed upon, whether it's, you know, two village board members, two town board members.
Should we see if they're still home?
No.
Well, I know Jerry, he has some thoughts. He might need some laypeople, you know, just residents.
Yeah, I just, it just needs to be a bunch of people that can really look at everything and present to both boards. And, and then both boards have to agree on it. It's, if it all is heavy one way, then it's not going to work.
Exactly.
And that's why I keep saying partnership. It's, it's got to be partnership.
I, I mean, I talked to a couple of people, Phil Worth. He said he would love to be able to sit in with both of us. Barry Howard from the Chamber said, I, I know all of this. I live in Penfield. I am not, you know, I don't want the town. I don't want the village. I want it to work together. Those are the kind of people, besides our residents, that I would like to get in there. They're sensible people.
No argument there, Jude.
No. It's been for two months.
I argue, I will argue that. Heather, if you don't mind sending us all the minutes from the last two months of meetings and see how many times that was involved in this meeting by Jude?
Uh, yes. Yeah, no, no, but I think I'll be quiet and discuss.
Both of them. I don't think, just recommend that we don't do word for word minutes.
It was more of a.
So, Don, do you, I recommend that there be most of us. Well, no, I would, I would, I would suggest that your motion simply say that, you know, a motion to form the, the joint project steering committee.
Can we do that without them here?
Who's?
You just.
Well, yeah, indicates the village wants to do it, then obviously the town board will have to take, they say no, then.
Guess what?
Then you're, I guess your mind, but I guess they've decided they don't want to turn with the village. I find it hard to believe they're going to say no.
Exactly.
But, you know, it's up to them to, but, 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 the motion, the motion could say, you know, the exact composition of the committee to be determined jointly with the town.
That the village intends to jointly engage with the town.
I think we all seen it here, whatever, but I don't think they have to.
No.
All meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like we have to have this tomorrow.
No.
It's going to take a while.
I'm saying, I haven't had it.
And what is the, what is the process of determining who's on this committee? So we have to discuss all of them.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I think the mayor, the mayor, or in consultation with the other trustees, suggests you would do it. This is, these are the types, the numbers of people we would like. And they'll say, okay, or how about this? And you'll come to some mutual understanding. Form a meeting.
Yes, we did. It's definitely going to have a job and it's going to have village specialists. It's going to have people that are interested, people who have.
You just, and just, this is just, this is just personally speaking from, you know, somebody's back. You just got to be careful. You don't want to make it too many people. If it gets too large, nothing tends to ever get accomplished because you got too many.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
No, my question is, how are we going to determine who's on this committee? How are we going to figure that out?
That's what he was just saying.
Okay.
Well, you guys need to decide yourselves. Do you want two board members? Do you want Jake? Do you want X number of laypeople? And you suggest that to the, just suggest it to the.
And what do they want?
And they'll come back and say, yeah, we agree, or how about this? And you'll end up with a consensus. But I don't think it's going to be that hard.
No.
But the main point is you're in favor of taking the next step and at least forming the committee. The exact composition of which will be determined jointly with the town. I think that's sort of a motion.
Is this a committee to steer the project to completion or one to steer the boards to a decision whether or not.
It's, it's the second one. It only, it only steers the two boards to a decision, which ultimately ends up with a memorandum of understanding. If there is no, you know, if the village decides we don't want to enter into a memorandum of understanding, well, that's sort of the village's decision to go by themselves.
Yep.
But once there's the MOU, there's no more need for the committee anymore. At that point, it's coming up with the IMA and secret. It's his steps that he outlined on that one slide.
Yeah, that was part of the challenge of doing this. Because when, when the numbers were presented originally, I've worked with Peter and went back and forth a lot. Peter Baker from PNL is that there are so many things that were up in the air still, you know, and it's, we were trying to get, ultimately, you know, we want to make sure, see how this is going to impact our residents. And it's like, okay, well, how would this be? Well, we don't know yet. That would be an IMA. So they wanted to see what was functionally possible, what was physically possible. And we know through that that, you know, whatever regional alternative or individual plans, those are all possible. But we don't know the makeup, so you can't really drive numbers until you know.
Right. I don't even think with a committee rule that you still won't have all the final numbers.
And that's.
Because of the grants, which we know.
But at least you'll have an understanding as to, you're going to be responsible for this. And you, you're going to be responsible for that.
Yes.
But there's still could be an M.O.U.
It's deciding and then figuring out the, you know, deciding you want to have a cake and then figuring out the ingredients and looking and finding out, you know, pickles and fish in your refrigerator, that's not going to make a really good cake, but you've already decided.
Unless you like it.
Right. But you know what I mean? So let's go and see what ingredients we have first and then figure out what we can make with it. It's like, maybe it's backwards, kind of.
It's like.
Yes, Jake.
You're going to get in trouble if you continue that.
All right, so Don, very nice.
Why did I tell him when you said that?
Put together, send to both boards.
Yeah, or like he said, that would be agreed upon by the agreement. We'll get to that. The memorandum.
We got to get this back here before we, you know.
Right. What is this, Tom? Motion for the village, the village and town to engage.
Steering committee, just to know.
Motion for the village and town.
To engage in creating, creating a project steering committee.
Projects steering committee that would put together to present to both boards the need, that would need to be agreed upon by both parties.
Is that all right?
All right, Don? And I would make a motion for both village, for the village to engage with the town in a joint project steering committee where the committee be put together to present to both boards that would, would need to be agreed upon by both parties.
Well, not the need, but the members of which? The, the composition board, who's going to be on it?
That the members of, okay. The members of the village and town to engage in a joint project steering committee whose members will be decided upon by both boards.
Correct. I think that's as far as we need to go. Correct, I think that's as far as we need to go.
At this time.
I think that's your resolution right there.
And then after that, what they come up with, well, obviously, that needs to be agreed upon by both boards, right?
Yeah.
That's where I do the stop. So we're ready to go to the next step, we would go to the next.
My assumption is, is the steering committee at some point is going to hold a joint public informational meeting, and then at that point, the individual boards will decide, which way are we going, are we going forward or... Okay. So, so for, like, one of the, one of the issues Clem had was, you know, the redundant trickling filters, and nobody's approached the DEC yet. Well, the steering committee would approach the DEC and say, hey, if we do this joint project, or the village goes alone, does the village, is the village gonna need a redundant trickling filter?
Because if we have a joint project.
So, so then you can, if they say no, well, you cannot take that $1.8 million off of one of the numbers, when, you know, when it comes down to getting more hard and fast figures between what these two projects. Well, there's always gonna be some of those, but you're getting, you're getting closer than what it is now.
Exactly.
So why don't you just do a resolution to move to step two?
That's good, I like that, I like that.
Why don't you suggest that part of this is maybe form the committee, or propose committee and say, hey, here's how we think it's gonna be made up, and then have it presented to the board, the town board, and the village board, and I think a very important part of it's a mission. One of the last meetings we had, we talked about when we can keep, you know, they said you can keep moving out with a goal, and I asked them to state the goal, what's the goal, what we can get to, you know, combining the plans. I don't think that's the goal, I thought the goal was to figure out if it's a good idea or not. So if we're looking at these from diametrically opposed views, and what the purpose of this committee is, I think that creates a problem in the committee to start with. So if you just say, hey, the mission of this committee, or the goal of this committee, the task of this committee is to do X, you know, to determine, maybe make a recommendation on how to proceed with these different alternatives that might keep things focused a little better than, sometimes committees, you know, they may, are formed and find that they, it might not be something, now in this case, but sometimes committees are formed and there's not something to do, they start making things up, because they feel like they have...
That's why it's important to have committees that are outside eyes. So we have outside eyes that aren't on either side, that's, that's the thing, so, so I don't think we're missing anything. All right.
So, I would make a motion for the village and town to engage in a joint project steering committee that would need to be agreed upon by both parties.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Salido?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Fairback?
Aye.
So we will move to the next step. Then we'll leave information in the public, and if we agree, then we move to...
Oh, yeah, right? God, thank you. Sam, do you have anything else that you would like to do?
Uh, no, I didn't.
What? Who are we? I'm not sure. What's that? This is a, this is a new, um, recommendation to the village, correct?
Yes. So... I, um, sent this to Don to review, with all the changing, like, needs and things that are happening now. It's really important that we, I have backup to some of these questions that come up. We really don't have a lot of support, kind of weird things kind of can come up sometimes with HR issues. So it's nice, it would be nice to have someone to call your questions. And I did mention this to Jerry, he's supposed to ask the person he works with, whether, okay.
Sorry.
The town doesn't utilize this place. And the cool thing is that they will, for a flat, I think it was around $2,800, it's a flat fee, that they will update our policy manual, and they will actually write our policy manual, and make sure it's up to code, and make sure it's not missing anything that are important. Especially, like, we need to cover, because you need to protect the village and protect employees. So, it's a one-time cost, and then...
Well, the one-time, again, I haven't had a chance to read this, but what they, what their, what their service is is to develop an employee handbook, which is less than the policy, because there's many policies that have nothing to do with employees, like there's a meeting policy, and there's some stuff that, you know, so, I'm not sure, you gotta ask them, if they're actually gonna redo the entire policy manual, but some of that may be outside their expertise, or are they gonna do an employee handbook?
It's an employee handbook. It's employee handbook.
She was just saying that.
Yes. So they update, they update that for us, and then there's a yearly cost of $1,500. $1,500, that's not a lot, to provide HR services, to need support. And included in that is any updates to the employee handbook.
In the wrong career field.
Things are changing now. And Bond actually gave me the recommendation, and they brought him out, and I met with them, and I'm just, I was really impressed, and I think it's important to make sure we're covering. So if it's something you're interested in, if you would like to ask for a...
I'd like to answer it, but I need to read the whole thing, and I need to see what they, they're offering the services, so I would not...
Yeah, I know where my point is going.
I'll make a commitment right now. And Heather, when you talk to this person, and you tell them, you know, a lot of the employees are union members.
Yes, they did.
So, all right, so they understand, because they're governed by the contract, which the employee handbook can't be, you know, contradict what's in the contract.
One other thing is that it would be cheaper than calling my attorney, our attorney.
Sign me up!
The cost would be less with having to communicate with our old attorney.
I still like, oh, you know.
Don, do you have a rebuttal?
I would say, as for, you know, you review the bills, it is a flat fee, you know, so I don't charge you hourly for this kind of stuff. So that may, so that may or may not be true, but in any event, they just need to be aware that when they do the employee handbook, it's in certain aspects superseded by the union contract.
So Heather's defense, she's brought this to us a couple of times, it sounds, it's been for me, yeah.
I certainly think for the $1,500, the HR support services is well worth it, because Heather gets questions all the time of, you know, on HR stuff, and she's got no one to ask.
It's all virtual.
They also provide, if I, yes, but also, they, if I can schedule it, if I have to meet with somebody, if I have to do a meeting with staff, they will come, they'll have someone else to protect me, which is also something good, that protects the employee, and it protects the supervisor, that they would sit there and act as a, you know, just, again, cover everybody.
But an employee handbook is probably a good idea anyhow, because everybody that works here, you don't give everybody the policy manual, right?
Exactly.
Every employee has the policy manual.
We had an employee handbook when I first started, and I think I rid of the employee handbook and said, because the policy manual was better. So that they got, they made a policy manual.
I provide, any changes we make, I provide, I make sure that they are disseminated to the staff. However, it needs to be updated, and I believe, I don't know, maybe you're gonna, I don't know. I think it was written by village employees, which is fine, but now you really need to make sure, but you're covered.
It was written right back, you're looking at it.
Well, like I said, I revise, I revise the entire thing.
Yes, so it needs to be looked at.
But there's stuff, there's stuff in there that doesn't necessarily apply to employees, that doesn't handle the, or what can... So, so the flip side of that is every employee doesn't necessarily need a policy manual. But they should have an employee handbook.
There you go.
Because, you know, the sewer plant employees don't really care about your meeting rules for, you know, the order of a meeting, and whether there's, and setting up a parks and rec committee, and, you know, some of this other stuff that's in there.
I definitely think an employee handbook is important.
So actually, maybe...
So these are just suggested topics here, or these are the topics that they routinely include?
They, um, yeah, they, I mean, they make recommendations to what they think, but they don't, we look at it, and we approve everything before, there's, we pay the upfront cost, and then we, we submit our, we submit everything we have to them. They come back with a draft, and then we pay the second part if we're happy with it. So we ultimately approve it, but they make recommendations, make sure that we're covering all the bases that we need to.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So everyone review it, and Heather, any questions?
Thank you.
What is the, um, eastern HR library library?
That's, um...
Resources for you, that you...
Yes.
Anybody, yep, yep, it's just a wall of information.
We use this. They reckon that, they mentioned to Heather.
Yeah, they, um, his company.
Our executive director of HR.
Save us some money if you utilize Jerry.
Touche.
Saving is fun, right?
Let us have an opportunity to look this over, and we'll put out these, and then we'll do a meeting for it.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Code enforcement.
And then he's gonna end up next to you when you're gonna...
Code enforcement, how are you?
You okay?
Um, for the sake of time, let's just ask if anybody wants to ask any questions.
No. Thanks, Bill, for all you do.
Do you want to know about the general remodel on Baker Street?
No.
Is that Jerry's house?
No.
Nope, two doors down.
You had probably got a lot of...
I thought so, I like, no.
What's the, um, status on the, uh...
Jojo's?
No. On, on Curtis, the, um...
That house?
Yeah.
243? Last I talked to the daughter, well, I gotta be careful here, because it's an ongoing investigation.
Oh, okay.
But the older Henry called me, and don't know whether he's gonna be going back there or not, don't know whether they're gonna be going back to the house or not, don't know whether it's gonna go into foreclosure, everything's up in here.
We can't really go back unless...
Not until it's sanitary.
What was the legal sign at Dunkin' Donuts?
Oh, those banner thingies, you know, those flag, the big flag things?
Oh, yeah.
So, I just sent everybody a mass letter, and they all got rid of it.
Good.
This was a...
Illegal sign.
Was that?
The illegal sign.
Yes.
Yeah, apparently.
Pumpkin spice season, so I guess that's...
Pumpkin spice.
Ooh, hot tub without a prevent.
How do you get that, drones?
How did I know? Concrete drops, a block, and I wrote it.
I would mention that there is a car, it is parked in the village lot next to the museum.
Yes.
It is a flat, um...
That's Judy's car.
And it actually has been there for a week, not moved, police were notified, but did nothing.
Okay.
And you can check into that.
Is it licensed?
It has a registration that runs out in August, it has no inspection sticker, and it's just...
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Department of Public Works.
Yes, I've been out, and I think it's the first time I'm seeing all of you together, so, as you know, my mother-in-law passed away, and I'm thankful, and my coworkers for filling in, and their patience. I take some time off there, kind of unexpected. In that regard, here in that tuning, I guess, I don't know if everybody knows, there's a longtime Webster family, Mr. Whitmer, who's recently passed away as well, and he's got ours, he was a huge part of the village and our whole community, so...
Well, I gotta say this, because both Jake and I were here one time when Mr. Whitmer spoke, and it was just like, it was awesome the way he spoke, we just sat there and smiling.
He's still gonna be called Atticus. He's very eloquent, and he spoke, yeah, I guess I've listened to him for a long time. But no, he was a, my limited introduction, but I know he was, he was, seemed like a great guy, but anyway, he was a big, big part of our history here, too.
You don't get to be president of the New York State Bar without having a little class.
That's why I will never be president of the New York State Bar. Depends on which bar. But, yeah, we're maybe, I'm looking at maybe Monday and Tuesday for the updates we were planning on later in the week, but we're shifting schedules around, so, so far, you know, everybody's been very, very helpful and cooperative, and we expect that to continue, we should have most of the baby wrapped up here next week, so... And then for sewer, I know we had discussions before, we found the most of the questions about the WIIA, the WIIA grant application is due in about a month there.
Well, it's not, the application's open, it's just there was information that was missing that would allow them to proceed with, or allow them to proceed with the application. So that includes getting the C D R mental review and the shipping determination letter.
Okay.
I got the email, if that's okay to proceed, I'll get you guys a proposal to proceed with that. That process can take a while, so that's why, you know, I thought there's a certain amount of urgency to that, because it's due September 30th.
Do you think options open?
Yeah, I think that's what it would like to do.
And that's all we need, those two things, a bond resolution doesn't have to be completed before?
They didn't, they started in the letter, I had to clarify with BFC and make sure that's, you know, they're just looking for those two things at this point.
So is everybody of the board agree they want to continue? So we got a new generator. So we got a new generator, now, and we'll be looking to get our other one removed, and probably try to put that into one of the next options, or one of the online options. There, it's not like we have a gas power, and it's quieter, it's outside, and it's not from 1960.
I think that was featured in The Last Man on Earth with Vincent Price, Susan Ross.
And then it's all.
Jake, I would add that, um, the, um, I would be, we're not there, it's like the new, the building down by, um,
Okay, I'll be done.
104, and actually, Veterans Park as well, in preparation for maybe September, um, you know.
9/11.
9/11, um, that's the weeds, we attended to, and we know that they are growing, and I'd like those two areas at least, if not also in the village, I don't know if there's still anybody left to do that. I don't know if there's still anybody left to do that.
Yeah, I know it's, uh, the next three workdays, we all hands-on back prepping for the paving, like you said, they moved up the schedule a little bit. I was trying to windows and, you know, weather windows and building some dates now and they don't have them there. Moving ahead, they'd rather do a job Monday and Tuesday than Tuesday and Wednesday because on Monday they don't have much to do. They do half the job usually, so we're trying to get prepped and ready for Monday and Tuesday, but then after that, we should be in pretty decent trade.
I would then announce that the next, um, uh, meeting will be the Village Board Workshop on September third and followed by the Village Board Meeting on September, well, if there's no other business.
I do believe that there is a little-
I guess, um, I will mention that. I will note that.
You don't have that on your agenda.
I don't have that on my agenda.
He took that earlier.
Oh, it's right there.
But I have one more thing.
No.
How many groups do you have?
Just one quickie.
I agree, Jake.
I just wanted to let you guys know that nine eleven ceremony is at six thirty, Wednesday, September eleventh. And, um, I'm working on giving all the speakers and everything and, um, I will keep you updated. And Will is helping me get to, um, pastors and we're in good shape, so most people have already confirmed. And I actually asked the village band to perform, um, some songs instead of the, um, singers. I hadn't heard that from them, but I will keep you posted.
Thank you.
That's the day before our meeting, so. Down in Veterans Park.
Yes, sir.
All right, the last thing I guess I have is a public notification. Uh, serial bond principal of interest payment on the bond is saying two thousand and twelve for one million, three hundred thousand dollars will be made in the amount of eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents on September thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. This bond was issued for financing of the STP grid system, five hundred and ninety thousand, which is now taken care of. STP reconstruction, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, and the water tank work, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. All right, there's no further business?
I just have one little thing. And, uh, in the Webster Herald today, um, there was a tribute to Carol Clem. Ken Kittleberger, um, put together a whole thing down at the Webster Library. She loved her yellow tulips. And so he has put in something, um, that just has all yellow flowers. I don't see you. Yeah. See, I don't see that you're gonna, right. But anyway, I just wanted everyone to know and take a look at it because I thought that was a really great thing for him to do. You know, she did love her flowers. I miss her too, so, that's all.
Thanks for sharing.
Any further business?
Yes.
If not, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Getting adjourned.
Jerry.
Nine eleven. They knew, um, presentation to the village, correct?
Yes. I, um, sent this to Don to review, um, with all the changing, like, needs and things that are happening now. Um, it's really important that we, um, I have backup to some of these questions that come up. We really don't have a lot of, um, support, kind of weird things kind of can come up sometimes with APR issues. So it's nice, it would be nice to have someone to call with questions. And I did mention this to Jerry, who's supposed to ask the person he works with, um, with the-
Sorry.
The town does utilize this, um, place. And the cool thing is that they will, for a flat, I think it was around twenty-eight hundred, um, it's a flat fee that they will update our policy manual and they will actually write our policy manual and make sure it's up to code and make sure it's not missing anything that are important, um, especially because that means we need to cover the resources needed to protect the village and protect the employees. So, um, it's a one-time cost and then, um-
Again, I, I haven't had a chance to read this, but what they, what, what their, what their service is, is to develop an employee handbook, which is less than the policy, because there's many policies that have nothing to do with employees, like there's a meeting policy and, uh, there's some stuff that, you know, so I'm not sure, you gotta ask them, if they're actually gonna redo the entire policy manual, but some of that may be outside their expertise. Or are they gonna do an employee handbook?
It's an employee handbook. It's employee handbook.
She was just saying it.
So they update, they update that for us and then, um, there's a yearly cost of fifteen hundred dollars. Fifteen hundred, that's not a lot, to provide HR services to need support. And included in that is any updates to the employee handbook.
In the wrong career field.
Things are changing now. Um, and Bond actually gave me the recommendation. Um, and they brought him out and I met with them and, um, I'm just, I was really impressed and I think it's important to make sure we're covering. So if it's something you're interested in, if you, uh, would like to ask for a little-
I may be interested in it, but I need to read the whole thing. I need to see what they, um, offering in service, so I, we got-
Yeah, I want to know where my money's going.
I'll make a commitment right now. And Heather, when you talk to this person, do you tell them, you know, a lot of the employees are union members?
Yes, they did.
So, all right, so they understand that because-
Yeah.
They're governed by the contract, which the employee handbook can't be, you know, contradict what's in the contract.
One other thing is that it would be cheaper than calling my attorney, our attorney.
Sign me up!
The cost would be less than having to communicate with our old attorney.
I'm still like, oh, yeah.
Don, you have a rebuttal?
I, I would say is for, for, you know, you review the bills, it is a flat fee, you know, so I don't charge you hourly for this kind of stuff, so. So that may, may or may not be true, but in any event, they just need to be aware that when they do the employee handbook, it's in certain aspects superseded by the union contract.
So Heather's defense, she's brought this to us a couple times.
I certainly-
For me, yeah.
I, I certainly think for the fifteen hundred dollars, the, for HR support services is well worth it. Because Heather gets questions all the time of, you know, on HR stuff and she's got no one to ask.
It's all virtual.
They also provide-
Another reply phone?
If I, yes, but also they, if I can schedule it, if I have to meet with somebody, if I have to do a meeting with staff, they will come and help someone else to protect me, which is also something good that protects the employee and protects the supervisor, that they would sit there and act as a, you know, just, again, cover everybody.
But an employee handbook is probably a good idea anyhow, because everybody that works here, you don't give everybody the policy manual, right?
Exactly.
Every employee has the policy manual.
We had an employee handbook when I first started. I think I rid of the employee handbook and said because the policy manual was better, so that they got, they made a policy manual.
Any changes we make, I provide, I make sure that they are disseminated to the staff. However, it needs to be updated and I believe, I don't know, maybe you're, I don't know. I think it was written by village employees, which is fine, but now you really need to make sure that you're covered.
It was written right back. You're looking at it.
Well, like I said-
I revise, I revise the entire thing.
Yes, so it needs to be looked at.
There's stuff in there that doesn't necessarily apply to employees, that doesn't, can't be in the required handbook. So, so the flip side of that is every employee doesn't necessarily need a policy manual. But they should have an employee handbook.
There you go.
Because, you know, the sewer plant employees don't really care about your meeting rules for, you know,
Does that ring them?
The meeting and whether there's-
Does that ring them?
And setting up a, the parks and rec committee and, you know, some of this other stuff is in there.
I definitely think an employee handbook-
Yeah.
Is important.
So actually, maybe-
So these are just suggested topics here, or these are the topics that they routinely include?
They, um, yeah, they, I mean, they make recommendations as to what they think, but they don't, we look at it and we approve everything before there's sort of, we pay the upfront cost and then we, um, we submit our, we submit everything we have to them. They come back with a draft and then we pay the second part if we're happy with it. So we ultimately approve it, but they make recommendations and make sure that we're covering all the bases that we need to.
Thanks. So everyone review it and Heather, any questions?
Thank you.
What is the Houston HR and HR library?
That's us.
Resources for you that you can-
Yes.
Or us?
Everybody, yep. It's just a world of information.
We use this. They recommend that how they mentioned to have a whole one.
Yeah, they, um, his colleague.
Our executive director of HR.
Save us some money if you utilize Jerry.
Touche.
Saving is money.
Uh, let us have an opportunity to look this over and we'll put out these number of meetings for approvals.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Code enforcement.
Then he's gonna end up next to you when you're gonna-
Code enforcement. How are you?
You okay?
Um, for the sake of time, let's just ask if anybody wants to ask any question.
No. Thanks Bill for all you do.
Know about the general remodel on Baker Street?
No.
That Jerry's house?
No.
Nope.
Two doors down.
Hot tubs, I like that.
What's the, um, status on the, uh?
Jojos?
No. On, uh, on Curtis? The, um-
That house?
Yeah.
Two forty-three? Last I talked to the daughter, uh, well, I gotta be careful here because it's an ongoing investigation.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, the older Henry called me and, um, don't know whether he's gonna be going back there or not. Don't know whether they're gonna be going back to the house or not. Don't know whether it's gonna go into foreclosure. Everything's up in here.
We can't really go back unless-
Not until it's sanitary.
What was the legal sign at Dunkin' Donuts?
Oh, those manure thingies. You know those flag, the big flag things?
Oh, yeah.
So, I just sent everybody a mass-
Oh, good.
Letter and they all got rid of it.
Good.
Illegal sign off.
Was that?
Looks like it. Illegal sign off.
Yes.
Yeah, apparently.
Pumpkin spice season, so I guess just-
Pumpkin spice.
Ooh, hot tub without a prevent.
How do you get that? Drones?
How did I know? Concrete drops a block in the road.
I would mention that there is a car. There is a car in the village lot next to the museum. It is a flat, um-
That's Judy's car.
And, um, it actually has been there for a week, not moved. Police were notified but did nothing.
Okay.
And, uh, you can check into that.
Is it licensed?
It has a registration that runs out in August. It has no inspection sticker and it's just-
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Department of Public Works.
Yes, I've been out and I think it's the first time I'm seeing all of you together, so, um, as you know, my mother-in-law passed away. I'm thankful and my coworkers for, for filling in and their patience. Um, I take some time off there kind of unexpectedly. In that regard, uh, here in that tuning, I guess, I don't know if everybody knows, uh, there is a long-time Webster family, Webster resident, Mr. Whitmer. He recently passed away as well. He's got hours. He was a huge part of the village and our whole community, so.
Well, I gotta say this because both Jake and I were here one time when, uh, Mr. Whitmer spoke and it was just like, listen, it was awesome the way he spoke. We just sat there and smiling.
He's joking, he called him Atticus. He's very eloquent.
Yeah.
He spoke, yeah. I guess I'd listen to him for a long time. Um, but no, he was, uh, my limited interaction with my know. He was, he was, seemed like a great guy, but anyway, he was a big, big part of our history here too.
You don't get to be president of the New York State Bar without having a little class.
That's why I will never be president of the New York State Bar.
Depends on which bar.
There's a student. But, um, yeah, we're paving, uh, looking at paving, uh, Monday and Tuesday from the updates we were planning on later in the week, but we're shifting schedules around. Um, so, so far, you know, everybody's been very, very helpful and cooperative, um, and we expect that to continue. We should have most of the paving wrapped up here next week, so. And then for sewer, I know we had discussions, um, before, we found the most of the questions about the WIAA. WIAA grant application is due in about a month there.
Well, it's not, the, the application's open. It's just there was information that was missing that would allow them to proceed with, or allow them to proceed with the application. So, that includes getting the seasonal environmental review and the shipping determination letter. I got the email, um, if that's okay to proceed, I'll get you guys a proposal, um, to proceed with that. It, that process can take a while, so that's why, you know, I thought there's a certain amount of urgency to that because it's due September thirtieth.
Do the options open?
Yeah, I think that's what it would want to do.
And that's all we need, those two things. A bond resolution doesn't have to be completed before-
They didn't list that in the letter. I had to clarify with BFC and make sure that's, you know, if they're just looking for those two things at this point.
So does everybody have the board agree they want to continue? So we got a new generator. So we got a new generator now and they will be looking to get their other one removed and probably try to put that into one of the next options or one of the online options. There, it's not like we have a, a gas power and it's quieter, it's outside and it's not from nineteen sixty.
I think that was featured in The Last Man on Earth with Vincent Price, Cesar Ross.
And then it's all.
Uh, Jake, I would add that, um, the, um, I would be- Grass there, it's like the, um, new rebellion down by, um, one oh four and, um, actually, uh, Veterans Park as well. In preparation for maybe September, um, you know.
Nine eleven.
Nine eleven.
Yeah.
Back the weeds. He attended to. I know that they are growing and I'd like those two areas at least, if not also in the village. I don't know if there's still anybody left to do that.
Yeah, I know it's the next three workdays, I mean, all hands on deck preference for the baby. Like I said, they moved up the schedule a little bit on us trying to windows and, you know, weather windows and building some dates now and they don't have them there. Moving ahead, they'd rather do a job Monday and Tuesday than Tuesday and Wednesday because on Monday they don't have much to do. They do half the job usually. So we're trying to get prepped and ready for Monday and Tuesday, but then after that, we should be in pretty decent shape.
I would then announce that the next meeting will be the Village Board Workshop on September 3rd and followed by the Village Board Meeting on September 12th. If there's no other business?
I do believe that there is a little.
I guess, I will mention that, I will note that.
You don't have that on your agenda.
I don't have that on my agenda.
He took that earlier.
Oh, it's right there.
But I have one more thing.
No.
How many clues do you have?
Just one quickie.
I agree, Jake.
I just wanted to let you guys know that the 9/11 ceremony is at 6:31 on the 6th of September 11th. And I'm working on giving all the speakers and everything in. I will keep you updated. And Will is helping me get to pastors and we're in good shape so far. Most people have already confirmed. I actually asked the village band to perform some songs instead of the singers. I hadn't heard back from them yet, but I will keep you posted.
Thank you.
That's the day before our meeting, so thank you. Down in Veterans Park.
Yes, sir.
All right, last thing I guess I have is a public notification. Serial bond principal and interest payment on the bond is saying 2012 for $1,300,000 will be made in the amount of $82,768.75 on September 13, 2019. This bond was issued for financing of the STP grit system, $590,000, which is now taken care of. STP reconstruction, $455,000, and the water tank work, $225,000. All right, there's no further business?
I just have one little thing. And in Webster Herald today, there was a tribute to Carol Clem. Ken Kittleberger put together a whole thing down at the Webster Iberia. She loved her yellow tulips. And so he has put in something that just has all yellow flowers. I don't see you. Yeah. See, I don't see that you're gonna. Right. But anyway, I just wanted everyone to know and take a look at it because I thought that was a really great thing for him to do. You know, she did love her flowers. I miss her tulips, so that's all.
Thanks for sharing.
Sure.
Any further business?
Yes.
If not, ask for a motion.
I'll make it.
Chair.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Getting there.